Council members, if you could please start to find your seats. It's six o'clock. It's six o'clock. It's time for our city council member. Today is August 26, 2024. If I, at this time, we could have Pastor Curtis Irvin, please come up. He's with the Claremont Avenue Baptist Church to do our prayer. You'll come up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Sherwood here. It's, I count it an honor to, for you to call on me to pray. Prayer is always in order, and I love praying, and I love preaching and teaching the Word of God, but I want to say to the mayor, thank you so much. I count it an honor. So let us honor the Lord that, and let's bow our heads as we go before the throne of God. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. We want to thank you, Father. Thank you, Father, for another day of life, a day that we've never seen before. It was you, God, that woke us up this morning. It was not our time, was not our alarm clock, but it was you. You touched our lives, and we want to say thank you in the name of Jesus. Lord, I pray for this community, Sherwood community. I pray for those that are in authority, that we can live a peaceful life with all godliness in the name of Jesus. I declare today, God, the peace of God, that past have all understanding, would be in this meeting today. Father, we give you praise, and we give you glory for who you are. Thank you for redeeming us, Lord. Bring us to a place in our life that we can live for you, and we can glorify you and honor you. And we thank you right now. Your presence is in this meeting, and we give you praise, and we give you glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen, and thank God.
If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Brooks.
Here.
Harmon.
Here.
Lilly.
Here.
Sanders.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Broderick.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Wade.
Here.
You received your July 2024 financials. Any questions? There being none, we'll move on to our committees and commissions. I'm so sorry. You also received the minutes from the regular meeting on July 22, 2024. Are there any changes? Or are they sufficient as transcribed?
Move for adoption.
Quick question. Did we apply for the Duran grant? The Duran, through that little park area out front?
It is, the deadline is not for that yet.
Okay, that minute reminded me that we were doing that.
Councilmember Brooks.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brooks, and a second by Councilmember Thomas. Roll call, please.
Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Once again, we've already, any questions? July 2024 financials. If there being none, we'll go ahead and move on to committees and commissions. We have up first, Advertising Promotion Commission Chairman, Councilmember Marina Brooks.
We are starting to talk about budgets. I think a lot of people are getting, this is, we're on the downhill slide of 2024, so starting to talk about 2025s. So we're starting to talk about our budgets now, so we are going to be talking about that in the upcoming month, in September. Our, we also are going to be talking about Trail of Lights. We will have a meeting sometime this week with a few of us to start our planning stages of, for the Trail of Lights. In the minutes, I do want to point out on page one, two, three, four, on page four, there is a typo, and this is on advertising, and that is one, two, three, four, five, six. On the seventh line, it's $46,000 left in the budget for advertising under AMP, not 446,000.
Ms. Brooks, did we rename the Trail of Lights or the Tunnel of Lights? I just saw that in the minutes, too.
The Tunnel of Lights is a separate project, and I know that Sean is not here today, and so I know that something that Sean is designing.
I've never seen that before.
AMP was asked to fund this out of AMP funds, and so Blake, do you want to get up and discuss or explain to everybody what the?
And I believe it was in the AMP budget that went before, so it's not new.
No, I just don't know what it is.
It's a, it's going to be a tunnel of lights that Sean is designing a building. It is going to go with kind of the thing that we have around the building that is going to go.
Here on this property?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. One of the bridges will have arches that you then walk through and creates a tunnel effect.
Tunnel of Lights.
So is this going to be ready by the winter fest?
It better be, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
That is the goal.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments? Then we will be meeting next week, which is the first Wednesday in February at 4:00 PM right here. First week in, first Wednesday in September. It's next week.
All right. We've got Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Harmon.
We did meet on August 12, and there are five full single-spaced pages of minutes in your packet. If you want to review them, if you have any questions about anything we discussed, feel free to ask. For those that are interested in our meetings, our next meeting will be the second Monday of September in this room at 6:00 PM. We discussed a lot of interesting topics. Like I said, if anybody's got any questions, let me know. Was there any, there wasn't anybody on that?
I don't think so. I was looking.
Okay.
I just had a question, but I reached out to Blake, and he answered it for me, so I think that was it.
Okay.
I did the same thing.
Yeah, wait a minute. There is, we have one speaker that's on the Duran Use Center. If that can come, we'll tell them.
It's whatever you think is best. Okay. Next up, we have Planning Commission.
All right. Good evening, Shelby Smith, City Planner. So this first item on Planning Commission this evening was a Master Street Plan Amendment. I have put printed copies in front of you, which are colored, which should show more detail of what is existing versus what is proposed. Ultimately, you will see a number of Master Street Plan Amendments coming before you in the coming months, because the plan has not been updated to any degree in about five years. So this is the first. Staff recommends a relocation of this proposed collector that runs east to west. It connects at Mine Road and then runs to Highway 107. The through connection of Mine Road and 107 was existing to the current Master Street Plan. All we did was move it south based on current conditions of the subdivision. So with any questions, I'll be open.
I, I had called earlier and talked to Cory.
Yes.
And Cory said, I had asked her about Mine Road, because at the end, of course, of Mine Road, there's that little gated area.
Right.
So where is this going to connect in regards to that little gated area?
So if you look at the printed version and also on your screen, it's just going to stub out and connect into this parcel, and I will go ahead and scroll down. This is the existing Master Street Plan, how it is effective, and it has the same connection. So that was unchanged.
So it's actually not going through Mine Road. It comes to Mine Road.
Correct.
To Mine Road, okay.
Yes, and if there's not any other questions, I need to actually read the resolution. Okay. We have a resolution amending the Vision Sherwood 2040 Comprehensive Plan and Master Street Plan. Any other questions about this?
I just have, can we read, I mean, I think A and B are connected, right? Can we read it just one time, since it's such a big jump from residential to industrial, as the council agrees?
So this is the Master Street Plan Amendment.
It's not relevant to B. It's a separate.
It's not. All we're doing is shifting that proposed connection, and it is proposed. It's the plan that we follow when development comes in. There is existing subdivision that runs through the current plan. It's not a viable option any longer.
B is about Trammell Road.
Okay, okay. I thought the two were.
Oh, no, ma'am. They're not connected.
In order to get to.
I gotcha. Not connected.
No.
We talked today, Shelby and I talked today, so I, remember we talked about the dirt road-looking thing?
Yes.
Okay, that's what was supposed to have been the collector, correct?
So on the screen right here, here's Fern Ridge that we had discussed earlier today, and of course, Wooddale to the north. This is the existing proposed connection.
You're bringing it, you want to bring it south.
So I'm going to go up real quick, yes, and it's going to run through Oak Forest, which is existing.
Which is the red road right there.
No, it's the yellow.
It's yellow. No, it's the yellow. It's existing now.
Yellow brick road.
Yellow brick. Shush, shush. So that's going to be the collector now instead?
Yes, we've just moved it southward, but the through connection, not that where it connects to Mine Road and Highway 107, that is unchanged. It's just dropping southward based on current conditions.
Okay. Will you remind us of the impact of a collector road? When that becomes a collector, what are the changes?
So as it's built out, we actually did discuss that during the meeting. So Oak Forest will remain built to local standards. It's existing. We're not going to make it increase from the 27-foot paved width to the 36, but any area in this Highway 107, Oakdale corner intersection right here that is commercial would be built to that collector standard.
The Oak Forest is already currently acting like a collector, as you can see, because of everything that is being built off of it, and it's continuing down that way. The other thing, too, that's important to note, is the city has parkland.
This property right here.
All that area is parkland.
Which property are you pointing at? East or west?
Here, I'm going to zoom in. This area is the city's.
So what that allows, too, is more accessibility of that. Do you, do you see which one it is, Beverly? I mean, Councilmember Williams. It allows for more accessibility, not only in terms of, it allows that neighborhood another in and out, but it also allows for access to the park without having to always go through that neighborhood area.
And the name of this new collector, what's the name of that street now?
Well, it's proposed. What is existing, the portion of the collector is Oak Forest.
Okay. Is it wide enough? It's, because collectors are normally a little bit wider than the other residential streets.
So that's what we had originally discussed, that it is built to local street standards, and that will be, remain unchanged. It's serving the purpose of a collector at this time. Any area that's built to the commercial standards will have to adhere to that 36-foot paved width.
Okay, so where, again, where is this meeting Mine Road at? Because according to the map, it shows it right on the curve of Mine, but you're saying it's north of that?
It's just outside of it.
It's just right outside of it. Where Mine Road comes off Kellogg Acres Road, right here on the screen, I'm circling it. That is where it is already existing, and that's where we propose to let it remain.
No, I'm saying, but where it connects, is it going to connect in the curve of Mine Road, where the, where the map is representing it right there?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so that proposed road then would be 36-foot by the standards of today?
Anything in the residential area. So this property has been platted for some time, preliminary plat, and it's in phased residential development. So any area that would be considered to be built to the collector's standards would be down in the intersection of Highway 107 and Oakdale, in the commercial area.
Okay, what would, what is the width of that road through the residential area? What would it be by today's standards then?
It is built to local standards, the 50-foot right away, 27-foot paved width.
Okay, and what is going to happen then when that connects to Mine Road, where it's nowhere near those?
There is plant, there is subdivision planned out for that, the remaining property in this area, there is, there's a preliminary plat that's been existing and continuous construction for at least 12, 13 years. There is subdivision going there.
But it's not going to affect your, and I think, because you live over on Mine Road.
Correct.
It's not, it's not changing your street.
No, I understand. That's what I'm saying, but we're going to have a wide collector street hit a nine-foot road.
It's not, whenever that development is coming through on this west side that is proposed, as it is existing and how it is proposed to be amended, that is going to remain unchanged. The collector standard is going to be focused towards the commercial areas.
And the commercial areas, the buried areas right now?
Which would be, yes, over on the east side of this proposed, yes.
Towards 107.
I guess the question I'm getting at then is, Mine Road as it exists now is, give or take, nine foot, 10 foot.
Right.
Very small.
Very narrow, yeah.
Mine Road doesn't change.
So where it interchanges with this new proposed road, that new proposed road is going to be a bigger road in a residential section.
Correct, and if it does build out, and again, this is proposed, and with the Master Street Plans, it's a, it's a policy document for guidance as development comes in to the city. So any development that would tie into that as the proposed collector, it would have to be built to a standard that was appropriate.
Right, so I'm getting back to my main point, is we're going to have a wider road dump into a very small road.
There is potential with the development for that connection to be made, that it has to be brought up to that local street standard, and that would be something that would be discussed at the time of development.
Say that in English.
In English, okay. So that, whenever.
Does that mean if it's a 27-foot road, it's going to come down to an 18-foot road all of a sudden?
The existing, the existing design connects right there as well. I mean, that's, that's not a change.
That's not something.
Mine Road is thumping into that road.
Correct, I understand that. I'm just trying to get the difference, understanding where that road is, a very small, narrow road.
As it's currently built, that would be the case, but there could possibly be provisions as it's platted along the way that would have required that to come up to standard. But anything 36-foot paved width or greater that would be proposed of this would be tailored towards the commercial subdivision. And we spoke with the developer in the area, because it would look silly, and it doesn't make sense to have it increased to a 36-foot paved width. All we're doing is dropping it down to make a connection that is more viable than what is existing, because it presently runs through platted lots and homes. So this will be the first and many that you will see in the coming months.
Will there be another roundabout on the west side of that?
At this point, that's not something that I can speak to related to application of plans.
Yes, we had one person sign up to speak about this issue.
Shane Graham, next to last.
Shane Graham? Yes, sir. Would you like to come on up? If you'll please state your name and address and, for the record, that'd be great.
You have three minutes.
You have three minutes.
Shane Graham, 9417 Meadow Garden Circle. I am the acting POA president for Miller's Glen. As it just got brought to my attention that this was a changed plan, and for our, my residents in my neighborhood, I'm going to say there's going to be a lot of pushback for this change with the collector streets coming off of 107 in Oakdale due to the, just, when you start messing around with the agricultural area or the, the, the lay of the land, you're already dealing with a nasty swamp to the north of that, and you're going to end up cutting through that, it looks like, so have fun with the EPA on that one. The drainage on the, the east side of Miller's Glen is already bad, and it's been brought to the, to the city's attention a number of times. So whenever you start bringing in more economic growth or more road structure, you're going to start dealing with some drainage issues. And I'm going to go out on a limb and assume those, those residents aren't going to want that. The residents in the neighborhood, they just called me up today, because it was on the agenda, and they weren't aware of the, I guess there was a proposal that was already pushed for the change of this on the 13th, I believe.
The Planning Commission, yes, sir.
Okay, and so I believe it was last year, we had the bicycle path plan that came up as well, and it was supposed to go the north end on that high voltage power line to the north, and it's going to drop into our neighborhood, and then we also have this coming through, so there's going to be a lot of pushback if we decide to connect through. And as, I believe it's Representative Wade right there with the connection on, on Mine Road, that's going to put a lot of traffic coming through that neighborhood, coming off of 107, being a cut through, going straight to Kellogg. It's going to be kind of a Miller crossings issue. Roads are already bad due to developers blowing the roads out constantly. So it's just a number of headaches that we're going to have. So as the president of POA, we've already got people that are voicing their opinions on being against it. I guess it's you and both of y'all? I'd like to, you know, talk to y'all further about this in the future. And I guess his name is Michael Clayton is the one who called me about this to bring it to my attention. He's a resident of the neighborhood. The name may ring a bell with some people.
Yes.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
All right, that's all I got.
Was the, was the, it was my understanding that there was always going to be a connection from, that was stubbed out from Oakdale?
That is, yes, so the.
So that's not new.
That's not known, no. And then there is a slew of mixed zoning, some of it's R3, some of it's commercial uses within this intersection at Oakdale and 107.
So what's, so exactly what, you're saying there's already going to be a, a connection stubbed out off of Oak Forest?
So down here on Oak Forest, the east side, to where it's the undisturbed, unimproved property, it is stubbed out for continuation of Oak Forest.
Of Oak Forest 2107?
Yes, towards that direction.
So, and was it already planned out to go west, or was that not? Was that, is that all new?
So right here on the screen, this is the current effective Master Street Plan. All that staff has proposed was changing the route based on existing conditions. So originally, whenever this plan was ultimately approved by council in December of 2019, it included the Master Street Plan with this proposed collector running the same course, essentially where it ties into 107 and ties into Mine Road.
Okay.
It's just changed the direction, moved it down based on the subdivision.
Other question I have is, if we change zoning and it affects somebody within so many hundred feet, we have to notify them. If we change the Master Street Plan and the changes we make are affecting an already developed subdivision where people are living, do we not have to notify those people of the upcoming change?
So whenever this is Vision 2040, it was adopted by a resolution, so with that, it is a policy document, is a guiding document as we make decisions related, as a city as a whole, as it relates to future land use, Master Street Plan, things of that nature. So from the public notice standpoint, the Notice of Public Hearing for the Master Street Plan Amendment for the Planning Commission was advertised within the parameters of state law for the Planning Commission meeting, and then it's also made accessible online.
Got you, okay.
So we have.
So we did, we did note, we did do public notice.
There's just no radius requirements, because the given nature of what it is.
It's not like we mailed a letter to them.
Be too many people to notify.
Correct.
But they didn't, a letter was not mailed to them like in a rezoning?
It, right, correct. It's not a requirement. That's not, it's not typical.
Are you referring to back in 2019? That's when they were notified?
I'm referring to the connection that is on the screen as proposed, it running through these parcels of land, tying into Mine Road, tying into Highway 107. That is part of the original plan that council adopted in 2019. We're shifting that connection down.
I guess what I'm asking, when Councilmember Harmon is saying where they notified and he went through that process, did that process happen several years ago?
That was all encompassed when the plan was being planned, I would imagine. There were public hearings and public meetings.
In 2019.
In 2019, correct.
Yeah, but she's also saying that there was a public notice for the last, for the last meeting.
Correct, the Planning Commission, we advertise for Planning Commission meetings, anything tied with a public hearing, and this does have a public hearing as a resolution that comes before y'all.
So how do we let these people know? I mean, if you let them know.
It's the advertisement on the city website. That's the due diligence that's done.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable about, I mean, these folks here, and I understand the road is stubbed out right there, but man, this is, I think this is going to take a little more discussion than, you know, they didn't have any idea, you know, that's, and I just got, Shane, I just got your email a while ago. I think we need to discuss this a little further. That, that's impacting a lot of folks.
And I would be open to recommendations, because I hadn't had any initial discussions before this afternoon concerning this item on the agenda, and I'm open to ideas of where.
I just make a motion that we table it to the next meeting. They'll give you 30 days to discuss it with the residents. Make a motion, we table.
A second. Roll call, please. Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Next up, we have an ordinance amending the official zoning district max for the property located at 300 Trammell Road and for other purposes. And this and C, just for the record, are two separate areas, separate issues, so we have to take them one at a time.
Now, I've already mentioned to Shelby that I'm, I'm a little less comfortable dealing with these rezonings when I don't have any idea what happened at the Planning Commission meeting, because we didn't get the minutes. And so I don't know who spoke for, who spoke against, what it was like at the meeting or anything like that.
That's, I did call today and got the minutes emailed to me, because I also did not have any minutes, so, because when I called the first time, Cory said, well, if you read the minutes, I started looking through my packet, there were no minutes.
Well, I thought they'd be, I figured they'd just be here. I didn't bother to call them. I just figured they'd be one, one zero there.
So I called back again and asked to be emailed, but I agree, when you read the minutes, then you know, it sounds like this one was a no brainer. No one was, nobody was against this. Everybody was for it. Is that correct, Shelby?
And I can certainly speak to that. So that meeting was, it was very detailed. There was a lot of conversation. So those minutes in the draft state were even still pending whenever y'all's packets went out. So there was thorough discussion that was had. The original request was from R1 to I1, based on compatibility with the plan. Ultimately, after review, staff reviewed the application based on the uses that are existing on site, and then also proposed uses for the future. There is another use out on the property that is basically ready to go. It just doesn't currently meet fire code requirements. So whenever that was all discussed, basically, it's a pathway towards trying to achieve compliance, and the Planning Commission agreed, so they recommended the rezone from R1 to C4.
This is an existing business, I believe, and a sliver of it is in the city, and.
It is a strange parcel of land.
And a lot of it is in accounting, where there, there is no zoning. So what this does do is it does put the business in compliance. I believe it's an event center. Is that correct?
So there is an event center. It was constructed out there, ready to go, and it does not meet fire code requirements. So they're still trying to work out those kinks, but there is an existing construction company that operates out there as well.
It's right across from our Round Top Station.
Yes, it's the last parcel within the jurisdictional bounds of the city of Sherwood by half, so.
By a hair.
It is a strange.
So what's the link between the I1 and the C4? It came in as I1, but that's not.
So the application was initially for I1. Staff reviewed it. The recommendation was C4 based on the current uses proposed and compatibility with the future. But with this application, there has, it's been in the works for quite some time just due to unpermitted work in the area, and they're essentially trying to achieve compliance at this point.
It's my understanding that C4 has outside storage. That's the main difference.
Correct.
I don't see what the purpose of this building is, has outside storage. It's, it's a place to come and congregate, so to speak.
Well, there is a construction company that operates on site.
On site of an event center?
So it's one large structure you'll see on your screen. I can scroll in a little bit. And I do believe I saw the owner here, he's also the applicant. He could speak to that. This structure in its entirety is multifaceted, as it pertains to different business ventures.
So is it industrial, then, better than the city?
So originally, with the application and based on compatibility with Vision 2040, yes, in that sense, but it restricts any future uses, and we don't foresee.
That's why they come back and reapply.
Correct. So that would be something, Planning Commission recommended C4.
So Shelby, what, what happens to the, well, there's, there's three R1 designations up there. Actually, there's four, but, you know, the, the two in the middle.
Actually, there's four, but you know, the, the two in the middle to the, to the right and then the one at the, at the top. I mean, do those stay R one amongst all of that commercial or how does that?
Yeah, there are a mix of uses. There's a mix of uses as it even pertains to non-conforming uses in the area. A lot of things have just functioned this way for a period of time. And where this property is located at 300 Trammell Road, there was an existing higher intensity commercial use prior to the owner purchasing this property and utilizing it for his current operations.
Next door to that is where Butch Davis used to keep his goats.
I don't, in fact, I, like, there was even conversation back and forth, is this actually in Sherwood, is this not in Sherwood? And so, after research, they found out it's barely in Sherwood.
Ordinance 281 annexed part of the parcel.
It is, it is. We're OD, and-
OD funk.
Yes, that is correct.
Y'all ever practiced baseball out there, Mike?
Everybody did.
Everybody played, practiced baseball out there, didn't they?
Yes, he is telling.
So, is this, could we wait?
Well, I'm going to place it, I would like to place on second reading.
Second.
Roll call, please. Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams. Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Okay, is that six to two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's suspended, we will, you can read it again.
An ordinance amending the official zoning districts maps for the property located at 300 Trammell Road and for other purposes. It's the second reading.
Would it make either of you more comfortable if you spoke to the applicant who's in the audience? Is there any questions you might have for him?
That'd be great.
Do you like to come forward, please?
So, that's being used commercially today.
See right here, it's, I'm just pulling it up on.
If you'll please give us your, your name for the record.
My name is Jerry Guzman, mayor, council members. So, 2008, started American Structure, Inc. in North Little Rock, been operating there for, since 2008. We started to expand. We found this property on the market. We're up to about 46 employees at the moment, and we wanted to expand. So, we saw this property for sale. OD funk ran a carport business there for umpteen years, since 1984, I believe. So, we assumed all the paperwork was commercial. And as we start working with Sherwood and finally they adopted us, they're like, hey, Jerry, we see you. So, now, you know, somebody started looking our way. We're starting to get services now from Sherwood, which is great. This came up, so we're just want to make sure that we're following all the rules, ordinances that we have to, and we're abiding. The, both planning has been amazing as well as everybody at the office, they've been working, trying to get everything up to code, and we're abiding by everything. So, and, and our, and our intentions where this was already commercial was done. But, you know, she mentioned there was an annexation, automatically that brings it down to R one. So, we're just following the process that's being recommended to us by, you know, city members. But we're excited to be part of Sherwood. And hopefully you guys can enjoy this place when I'm done with it. I have huge visions. So, we plan to build an upright location, event center. You know, we run a construction company out of there. I also own a hardware store in North Little Rock. One of the warehouses is there. So, we have a lot of, a lot of visions for that area. And I don't know if you guys have driven by, nobody rarely does. We don't have streetlights over there, but you know, bring a flashlight. So, if you want to see us. But they're working on that. The city's working on helping us with that. But, you know, we're just, we're just tickled to death to be part of Sherwood and looking forward to meeting everybody in the neighborhood and, and you know, bring, having people come along, so.
Glad to have you.
But I'm excited that you're here, too. This is my hesitation. I feel like we're rushing this a little bit. And if, if my, my question is, is I one better long-term than C four? Because what will happen is if it goes C four now, and then in five, six, seven years, somebody next door is going to say, well, that's C four, this should be C four. And then, and then it just kind of grows and we-
Goes down the road.
Exactly. And so, that's, that's, I just want to make sure that we have the right zoning.
Especially since he asked for an I one, that was my question.
Does I one give him the outside storage?
Well, so I can speak to that. Whenever this came, and this is what happened, they originally had a business license in North Little Rock, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We've been working since maybe March to get to this point. So, they originally had a business license in North Sherwood, or, not Sherwood, North Little Rock. And then they went, found this location, started business. So, at that point, the business license, when it was time to renew, came into my office and it's being reviewed. The use is not allowed in that zone. So, then we went through the rezoning process. Well, through that process, we also discovered that there was an event center that has been fully built out, ready to go, basically waiting on a business license that staff was not aware of. And then it also doesn't meet fire code. So, there's a slew of uses out there that are not compatible with the underlying zoning of I one. So, C four was the next best option as it relates to compatibility with the plan, uses that are permitted, and C four, and I one. Basically, it's all encompassing of what potential uses are now and in the future.
So, C four, he'd be in compliance. I one, he would not be in compliance.
Correct.
So, I one does not work for the property.
And so, I do believe there are 43 additional uses permitted in C four over I one.
Okay.
Is C three, C three is not an option either?
For the outside storage, the construction, that would not be a permitted use. So, that's where it kind of is hung up at this point.
Jerry, I want to say to you personally that-
Yes, ma'am.
I, I was kind of against this because I didn't like the idea of the C four right there by, by residential. And I've talked to Ms. Shelby today about this, and she educated me on some of the things, which is a good job, girl. But I like what you had to say, and I'm trusting that you're going to keep working with them correctly, and then I'm going to support you based on that trust I'm feeling from you.
Yeah, not only that, we built, we purchased a couple lots on Trammell, so I build, I plan to build a home there so we can stay there. So, I'm not looking to bring that neighborhood down, if anything uplift it.
Okay.
Because it's, I mean, that side, after the, that little substation, I mean, it's been, I mean, it's no man's land, pretty much. And I don't know if anybody's been by that area. But my intention is by the time we're done, my vision is to purchase properties around there and beautify that area, so.
That part they call no man's land is called North Little Rock.
Wait, 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 no.
So, yeah, that's-
I told Terry Hartwig, we're calling it, they're calling, we're calling it North Little Rock, we're now calling it South Sherwood.
Yeah, so now it's going to be South Sherwood. So, I'm excited. Listen, thank you for the opportunity. You know, I see great things, but you know, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I move. We suspend the rules and place it on third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harmon and a second by Councilmember Thomas. Roll call, please. Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the official zoning district maps for the property located at 300 Trammell Road and for other purposes. That was the third reading. Move for the adoption?
Second.
We have a motion for the adoption by Councilmember Harmon and a second by Councilmember Brooks. Roll call, please. Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have an ordinance amending the official zoning district maps for the property located at Lot 19RR Marywood Edition and for other purposes. And this one did have public comment on it as, at the planning commission, if you'd like to fill them in, and we do have some people who'd like to speak to it tonight.
Yes, definitely. So, this item, this is a proposed rezone request from C two to C three with respect to the zoning request and compatibility with Vision 2040. It is in line with commercial corridor, also with C three standard requirements of that 100-foot frontage. So, it does adhere to that. With that, staff recommended approval of the item and planning commission concurred. But there are people here that wish to speak to it that also were present at the planning commission meeting, so I can allow them to speak at this time if that's fine.
And do we also have the-
The representative of the property is also here as well.
Great. So, if those of you who signed up to speak on this, if you will, please come up towards the podium and-
Lucian and, and Mrs. Gillum. And then Anthony Sidorian, I believe he is the representative representing the, the property owner. He's also signed up to speak. And then April, the lady you spoke to me about-
I believe they'd like to speak on our whole business.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless, I mean, they can correct me.
Okay, did I leave anybody else out that had signed up to speak on this, this item?
If you'll please give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Jan Gillum. I live at 8406 Pinewood here in Sherwood. And, thank you. We became aware of this rezoning about eight days before the planning commission held their meeting. And I'm glad to see that y'all changed that so that we have, you get 15 days notice with a letter instead of, what, five is what it was? And so, we had not very much time to rally the troops. Pinewood is a residential street. We already have quite a bit of traffic. Most of it's going too fast. We know that's a commercial lot, and we don't have any problem with that. But the zoning, we really believe, is where it was, where it should be. C two, which would be a quieter business with less traffic probably. And from what I understand, C three allows 40-something more different kinds of business. And I feel pretty sure that within those 40, there will be the kind of businesses that really don't belong on a residential street. Including businesses that stay open later at night with noise and with lights. If you've driven down Pinewood or down Keel and turned onto Pinewood, you know that that is, that, that area around that intersection is a very dangerous place. You have a hill that you can't see over. And when my children learned to drive, their dad told them, never get in that turn lane before you get over.
Ma'am, you have 30 seconds remaining.
Pardon me?
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Well, adding another business with high traffic with the situation that we already have, you won't know where to look first when you're trying to get off of Pinewood. And I don't understand why, if they have the option to leave it at C two, that they would choose to change it to C three.
Your time has expired, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Do I get to speak?
Yes, you do, Lucian.
Do I? Okay. I'll be real big quick. Of course, that's a corner, that corner is kind of dangerous. The one thing I would like to do is, we get a whole lot of traffic on Pinewood, and I wish I have no idea what kind of business will be up there at that corner. What I would like would be to make all exits back onto Keel Avenue rather than have people sneak out the side and go down Pinewood. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, if I would like to, please come state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Anthony Sidorian. I live at 1204 Coolhurst Avenue here in Sherwood, here to represent the business. I would just like to say, we live here, it's my hometown. I would definitely not be interested in anything that would be a nuisance or be, add chaos to the neighborhood. I hope to put something there that would be genuine value to the people that live nearby and that I would be happy to live nearby. I can't speak to traffic because that would happen with, you know, discussion with the city during the site plan phase. I'm completely open to working with the city and hearing out what would be the best solution to make everyone happy. But the business that we intend to place on that lot would be a coffee kiosk. And so, it's smaller, family-run and operated, smaller coffee kiosk that, the only real reason that we needed changed from C two to C three was in order to use a drive-through window to serve the customers. Our intention is not to be open late into the evening or be hazardous. And being just my wife and I, I don't intend for it to be a large traffic concern as far as through traffic. But overall, I hope to make something that we can be proud of, and we'd be happy to live near ourselves and work out the best solution for the neighborhood and for the city. And I can answer any questions.
Did you understand Mr. Gillum's last comment?
Towards opening egress-
Ingress and egress off of Pinewood. Would you be willing to have ingress and egress only off of Keel and have no access to Pinewood?
Yeah, if that would be the recommendation of the city, I'd be definitely open to hearing that out. I'm not all sure what the regulations would be for the size of the roads or what would be permitted, but I'm completely open to hearing out what would be best.
Councilmembers, if everybody could please speak into their mics, I'm getting lots of messages and complaints from online viewers that they are not able to hear what is taking place. No, no, you're fine. Thank you. Any other questions, councilmembers?
My, my only question is, if you could just do your ingress and egress off of Keel Avenue to accommodate Pinewood, because that is a hilly street and coming out is a hill and that lot there is, is a bad sight area coming off that hill there. So, that is a, if you could work with the neighbors, I think they would probably walk up there and get coffee from you.
Absolutely, ma'am. That is our hope.
Pleasure of the council. Any action you want to take at this time? It's been read once.
Does it have to come back with a, an amended version for the egress?
No, that would be site plan.
That would be in the plating process, wouldn't it?
So, the property's already platted, so that would come back in whenever they have site plan application or review that is accomplished by staff.
It also depends with, you know, because that's so much closer to that little hill there. And I did have some residents call me, and I think one of, one of the things, we all agree that Keel should be C, is, you know, is a commercial thing. And some of the commercial property backs up to other commercial property. This area backs up to residential property. I think that's why some of the residents were calling, so.
And, you know, in, in the past, it's been before 2040, and years ago, it was easier for the council to say, you know, we're going to zone this subject to the condition that there's no ingress and egress off of Pinewood. And, you know, it was in a document somewhere, and analysis is going to be in the minutes. But if we make a motion to approve this zoning, subject to the condition that there is no ingress or egress off of Pinewood, is that binding?
I would defer to Mr. Cobb. I wouldn't see why it wouldn't be.
No, I think you have the authority to... I'm sorry?
Finley needed to...
Come on up.
I'm not sure.
Sorry. Thought it might be worth considering that if you limit access on Pinewood, that means that if somebody's coming north on Pinewood to access this property, they'll have to make a left-hand turn onto Keel and then another left-hand turn into the driveway.
I've been doing that to go to the dentist for years, because he's right next door.
He's right there. He's next door to this coffee shop.
I've been doing that for years, to go to the dentist.
No, I think you have the authority to put a condition. You'd need to amend this ordinance and start over.
I'm not sure we want to do that, Mr. Harmon, until we see, until they start plotting it out. Because I know, I mean, that rectangle, the short side of that rectangle, to me, as I remember, is on Keel, and the long side of that rectangle is on Pinewood.
It is. It's 100 by 200 roughly.
We don't see the plat. We're not going to see the plat. It's going to go to the...
No, but I'm saying, I'm not sure that we would want to limit something that may not be even feasible.
It will go to Planning Commission. Staff will review it. We will take it to Planning Commission. There also is a public hearing tied to site plans.
If it might not be feasible, then my vote's no.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't...
Should we just read this one time?
Could you put wording in that, in this case, it would come back to us with the final site plan for approval?
No, it's in our, it's in our ordinance as to where site plan approval goes.
Yeah, that's at staff level. It doesn't come here.
It goes to Planning Commission with the public hearing. So, there will be opportunity for public comment. It is advertised in line with how we advertise everything else.
Finley, can you put an ingress/egress on 100, 100, on the 100 side of the rectangle?
You want to come on up? She's asking if it is possible to, if the frontage on Keel would be...
If this didn't work out and the property was sold, would the new property owner be held to the same standard, the same requirement? I mean, I don't know how that would work. That would be...
And we don't know what kind of business that would be either.
Right.
Yeah, I do know it's been for sale for a long time.
It has been for sale for a long time.
Show me, I have one question regarding the minutes. Because in reading the minutes on this particular item, and it's just talked back and forth, I think, between the Planning Commission...
Any other comments before we move on? There being none. Street Committee, council member and chairman of the Street Committee, Lilly?
Street Committee did meet. You do have minutes in your packet. We had discussion about the current overlay program, the current projects that are underway, mainly Jacksonville Cato now, some other conversation around the speed cushions and other such. But would I ask anybody, have any questions about the minutes?
I did.
Okay. We, go ahead.
I don't have any questions about that, but I do have a question about another, another street that...
Sure, fire away.
Want to go with this, your resolution first, let me ask it after this?
Mr. Lilly?
No, that's not my resolution. That would be the resolution of the mayor.
Mr. Lilly, I do have, I don't know if it's a question, excuse me. Mr. Lilly, I do have, I don't know if it's a question, excuse me, I thought you were through.
No. So, I had a call today about the overlay that we've had on Oakbrook. You know, it's been a hot topic lately. I had a call today about a road, Miller's Glen. And the question was, why was, is Miller Glen, is it on the, is it on the, is it on the proposed redo, I guess?
And I could have spoken to this if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I don't know whether Miller's Glen particularly is on there or not. I know the evaluation system...
As we all know, this has been a, been a hot topic. And so, audience, please, when people come up to speak, please be respectful. Do not applaud. Do not make comments from the audience. I know that there's a lot of feeling strongly on both sides of this, and just asking that we all be respectful.
Okay. Is my microphone not working?
It is. You have to get closer to it, Charlie.
I'll eat the microphone.
Yes.
I had an excellent meeting on Friday, a good, long meeting, with Chris Clark, the director of our animal services. And we visited, while we walked, part of it, we walked through the animal shelter, which, and I already knew this because I keep track of it with the weekly reports, but it's, it looked like, I would say, it was almost half the spaces in there are taken by pit bulls or pit bull mix animals, which is one of the things that we'd like to fix. But I think that I have come to the conclusion that just taking the BSL language out is not going to be feasible. But he and I talking believe that we might can do something hybrid in between, just going from BSL to vicious dog. And we need to rework what we presented. So, I'm going to make a motion. I still want everybody that's here to speak to speak, because I want to hear everything, everybody's, everything everybody wants to say. And you came tonight to speak, and I think you should speak. And we've gotten some great ideas from some of these people. Councilmember Williams and I were talking to, this evening before the meeting, about some of the information that we've received from people and how helpful it's been and how informative it's been. But I'm going to make a motion to withdraw my ordinance rather than vote on it tonight so that it can be reworked. And one of the reasons we do this is because if it's voted on, it can't be brought up again in a year if it fails. Whereas if I withdraw it, I can work on it again. I can make changes to it, and I can bring it up anytime. So, again, listen to me. If it's not withdrawn and it's voted on, and it doesn't pass, it can't be discussed again for a year. That's a restriction. That's the law. So, I'm going to move that we, that I withdraw it, and then that Chris and I work on it, and then bring back the revised ordinance. And I've got to work fast, because I've only got five months, four months, five months, five months left. So, I've got to work fast.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, before we vote on it, we'll have the people who signed up to speak about it. You all can then discuss it, and then the vote will take place on Charlie's motion.
Okay, I'm going to read everybody that has signed up and just ask everybody to come line up over here. Karen Schauer, Julian Carney, Robert Taylor, Stacy, don't have a last name, lives on Beaconsfield, James Anderson, Buddy Fisher, Allison Pretty.
Alyssa Pretty, I think.
Eight is the tax. Did I leave anybody off that had signed up for... What's your name, ma'am? Had you signed up, ma'am? I see you. I'm sorry, yes. You put number eight. You want to speak on number seven. Okay, come on up.
We'll ask each of you to, when you come up to the microphone, please state your name, your address, and then you'll be given three minutes of which to speak.
I'm Karen Schauer. It's 1527 Creekview. And I believe the BSL, sorry, this is way out of my element.
It's okay.
I believe the BSL is very unfair for a lot of reasons. I've shared with each of you via email some of the reasons I believe that. But I'd like you to think about the judgment that it forces. It forces us to look at, forces people to look at an animal based on just what they think it looks like and make a decision of what breed it is. That's simply unfair, and it's really not accurate at all. And then due to those decisions, when they guess, dogs are doomed to shelters or even death based on what we think that they look like. This is Tito, a beautiful Labrador Retriever. Labradoodle, I'm sorry. Thank you. That my friend of mine rescued a few years ago. Well, she did DNA, and Tito is a doodle because he's half poodle, but he's 13% American Pit Bull Terrier. And you would never guess it by looking at him. And then this one, this is Lucy, my niece's German Shepherd, who you would never guess is a German Shepherd. But the DNA shows the highest percentage is 36% German Shepherd on Lucy. But you would never guess that with these dogs just by looking at them. These are two that were in the Sherwood Shelter just last week. Stella was listed as a Hound mix, and Omelet was listed as a Pit Bull Terrier mix. Stella was adopted out of the shelter 16 days after she arrived. And Omelet will probably be there with Hash Brown for years if we don't change something, you know, based on just their looks alone. These are both in local shelters. This one is listed as a Dutch Shepherd, and I could go adopt her today. And this smiling face over here is listed as a Terrier mix and is illegal in Sherwood. And all of that is just based on what we think these dogs look like, which I think is very unfair.
Ma'am, you have 30 seconds.
A year and a half after we lost the dog that I adopted 16 years prior from the Sherwood Shelter, we've started looking, and every dog that we found in the shelters that we're interested in, we simply can't adopt because of this. So, I was going to ask you to please, on National Dog Day, to please vote for a change, right? But please, please make a change so that we can choose, you know, choose the right pet for our house.
Your time has expired, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julian Carney, and I live over in Indian Head on Shoshone Drive. I was a volunteer at the Sherwood Animal Shelter for approximately 17 years. And during my time there, I was always drawn to the underdogs, whether they were old or maimed or misunderstood. So, I became a pit bull lover. I'm the one that you saw put pictures of animals in pajamas online. I put them in lion's manes. I put them in bunny ears. I got knitted hats for them. And I did that to show what their personalities are like. An aggressive or vicious animal would never allow me to do that. Plus, it makes them more desirable when people misunderstand them. During that 17-year period, I literally worked with hundreds of pit bulls. I could probably name a lot of them. If we really had a problem with these animals being vicious, we would be putting animals down at the shelter. And during that 17-year period, only five or six dogs that were so behaviorally abused, even after interventions with behaviorists, even after interventions with trainers, even after interventions with volunteers and the experts and the staff there, they were too much of a risk to adopt out. We have pit bulls all across the country now. I follow them. We've got, we've got pit bulls in New Orleans, and in Boston, and Minneapolis, and St. Paul, Denver. We have people that want to adopt them here. The one beautiful thing about our city is that we have some of the best demographics in the entire county. We have great education rates. We have wonderful income rates. We don't have a problem with dogfighting. We don't have a problem with a majority of animals being abused or cruelty cases. So, because our community is different, maybe we should follow the leads of other communities. Atkins reversed theirs, Cabot reversed theirs, Malmell reversed theirs, Lono County reversed theirs, Russellville reversed theirs. Now, I get that people have anxiety about an animal that they don't understand. But I call them house hippos and lawn moors and couch potatoes. They really are passive, passive breed. We've had so many different mixes come in through the shelter during my time as a volunteer. I remember one named Hector. He was a half Basset Hound, half pit bull. Anyway, I hope that you'll do the right thing on National Dog Day and continue to keep an open mind, modify our BSL, allow for responsible ownership, stop increasing our housing costs, and stop putting the animals at risk to develop behavioral problems called kennel crazy when they've been in the cage so long. I encourage you to continue to inform yourselves of facts and don't base your decision on fear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Taylor. I live on 1000 Country Club. I'm against it. Y'all know, my ex-wife showed y'all pictures of Arson Robbie Taylor. They're very gruesome, and the pictures couldn't show them in court because it was a shock to people that was sitting in the audience. Just want to go ahead and state, y'all need to put SOPs down. I've driven around all the schools in Sherwood for all the elementary schools, and there's only one school that has a fenced-in yard, a fenced-in park. What about all the other schools? What if a pit bull attacks a kid that's at recess right now, that school started? That's going to be on y'all's hands. Y'all all have kids and grandkids. What if it's your kid that's on that playground that gets attacked? I'm just stating the obvious. What if it's a first respiner EMT that goes to a scene, and that pit bull is still on the loose and it attacks that person? Now, that EMT can't do that person's job, trying to protect that person, trying to help that person, or if it's a firefighter at an incident, or a cop that doesn't know what to do at a scene of a pit bull situation, that it might attack that person. You never know. It's going to be on y'all's hands if y'all pass it. Malmell did lift the ban, but you can look it up. It is in the record. They've already had three attacks since the ban. And the mayor is trying to put the ban back but won't get the votes. Just stating it. Thank you.
Stacy Sanchez of 614 Beaconsfield Road. I am also against, oh, Stacy Sanchez? Yeah, 614 Beaconsfield Road. I am also against it. And I think a lot of people are quick to say, you know, because of fears that we see on media and regarding the dogs, but a lot, for a lot of us, it's personal. Last time I was here, I did pass out some pictures, and I know some of you guys didn't see it. But this is my 20-month-old daughter who had her bottom lip and part of her chin ripped off and now deals with lifelong issues because of it. It's something that I saw happen, and, you know, 17 years later, it still haunts me. And it's not also for her, but it's for her parents, her grandparents. I still have contact with the chief, the fire chief, and he's now retired, and we still talk about it. He said it's one of the worst cases he's ever seen. I actually feel comfortable living here because of the ban, you know? A lot of people say, well, there hasn't been an attack well yet because, you know, it's not permitted. But for a lot of us, it does hit close to home, you know? I was diagnosed with PTSD because of it. I still, I just can't do it. But Robert brought up a good point. You know, a lot of the schools are not fenced in. You know, if you guys decide to pass it and the dog gets loose and attacks one of the children, who's going to be responsible? The owners, the school, the city? They're all going to try to pinpoint the blame on each other, and I just think it can be prevented.
Thank you.
James Anderson, 9797 Cliffside Drive here in Sherwood. At the last council meeting, we had three professionals give their input. We had two veterinarians from Sherwood and Mike Wheeler, the director of Animal Control Services in Cabot. Cabot previously had read specific legislation in place. They have removed it, and there has been no negative impact in that time. In fact, of the 40 dog bites recorded in 2023, only six involve pit bulls. So, removing that legislation did not increase dog bites. It didn't thrust dogfight rings into everybody's backyard in Cabot. But what it did do was allow the residents of Cabot to responsibly and legally own breeds of their choosing. Look, there's a lot of emotion around this issue. But the responsibility of writing or correcting legislation requires facts, not feelings. It is a fact that right now, there are pit bulls in the Sherwood Shelter, ready to be adopted, but they cannot legally be adopted by the residents of this city. It is a fact that your constituents want to see this law changed. Since the last council meeting, we have obtained several hundred signatures of residents who live, work, and spend their money here in Sherwood, all of which would like to see this law changed. It is a fact that as council members, you are... It is a fact that as council members, you are our voice. We look to you to speak on our behalf. I'm encouraged that this is being tabled for the time and being reworked, but I strongly encourage you, listen to the people. They want this change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Buddy Fisher, I live at 8949 Meadow Garden Circle. And I am definitely for lifting this. And I would like to comment on some things that will hopefully bring some common sense to this issue because I think this is what it's about. This is not a dog breed issue. It's like we have made it seem, or it's been presented as such, that, okay, we have a pit bull here and he's in his yard minding his own business and over here on the street is a little child. And the pit bull sees the child and says, hmm, there's dinner, let's go attack the child. That's ludicrousity, okay? Okay, my granddaughter spoke at the last meeting and the last thing she said was, which made sense of the whole issue, and this is what I really want you to hear, she said, puppies are not born mean. Hmm, kinda makes sense, right? So, babies are not born mean. So if a dog, any breed, attacks a person, then that comes back to ownership, not the breed of the dog, okay? It's been said that, well, pit bulls are bad because they have such a bad bite. Well, Google it up, it's your friend. And the top 20 dogs with the strongest bite, pit bulls come in at number 13. Above the pit bull is the German Shepherd. And right below it is the boxer and the horrible, Doberman Pinscher, yes. Which was the bad dog when I was young, okay? So, the point is this. I can have, only two of those breeds, by the way, of the strongest bite are in the American Pit Bull family, whatever you wanna call it, heritage lineage, okay? So, I can have 18 of these other dogs in Sherwood that have a stronger bite-
You have 30 seconds, sir.
-than a pit bull, but I can't own a pit bull because it's a bad breed. Well, as, as again, my granddaughter said, puppies are not born mean. This is a person, you know, require them to have a fence, fine. Require them to have shots, fine. Require them to have a leash, fine. Require them to be microchipped so that if there is a problem with the dog and it gets out, then we can track who owns it and hold that person responsible-
Your time has expired, sir.
-for their dog, not the breed, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, I'm happy to be here. My name is Alyssa Pretty and I'm at 9880 Willowbrook Drive in the Millers Glen subdivision. It's been a hot topic tonight. So I would like to say that I'm thankful to hear that the plan is changing to specifically state vicious dog instead of breed-specific. Those are some of the things that I've sent in my emails that I've sent to the council members. I also wanted to address, last meeting, I believe it was you, Councilmember Harmon, that asked about the attack in Arkadelphia. So I did some research on that and actually found out that the dog was an extra-large bully, an XL bully. They bought it from Nelson Bullies there in Arkadelphia. And on their advertisement, they talk about the weight and the mass and how those dogs will be good in people's clubs and add to your kennel. And those are all items that are indicative of a dogfighting ring. So, it was made out to sound like that was just a normal homeowner that got attacked by his loving household pet, his house hippo, and that's not what that was. You don't buy from a breeder that advertises those specific things for your family pet. And so I just wanted to address that, that it was very telling that that person that was brought up in the meeting had actually been attacked by a dog that was purchased from a breeder that specifically advertised for their size and their force and how they'd make a great piece of somebody's kennel club. I also wanted to address the fact that I do believe we should change the rules on breeding in Sherwood. I don't care what the breed is, but they should not be allowed to be bred in Sherwood. If you visit our shelter, you'll see there are plenty of dogs without breeding them, without having those businesses in Sherwood. I do feel like a responsible dog owner would appreciate and embrace that if they want them for their household pet. I don't know that dog breeding is big business in Sherwood, but it shouldn't be big business anywhere. I personally foster for the Sherwood Shelter and other rescue organizations around the state and we actually send some of the dogs up north because they have such strict breeding restrictions that they're not overrun with animals like we are here in the South. And so I think that's something that we should consider as a city, is actually putting more restrictions on breeding and not allowing a dog to be unsterilized, especially if it's deemed as a vicious breed. But I don't think that all families and people that-
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
-have a pit bull specifically should have to be penalized higher or different than dogs, say, German Shepherds or, you know, other large breeds, Great Danes, that sort of thing. I fostered a Great Dane one time that, you know, somebody came to the house and asked to use our bathroom. It was somebody working on our property. And we do have extra insurance because that's something that we do, so we have an umbrella policy in place. We are responsible pet owners. And the dog barked at her from a distance, she walked over and stuck her arm at-
Your time has expired, ma'am.
So it's all about making wise decisions.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura Pfeifer, 3016 New Kingston Court. I was just gonna share with some pictures with you guys. These are some of the pit bulls that are, they're labeled pit bulls that are currently at our shelter. So this is Hash Brown, if you guys haven't visited him up there. I know some of you have gone up there, thank you so much for doing that. And then we have King, but I'm gonna pass these around, just so you know. These are the dogs up there and we still don't know, the only dog that we know their true breed is Hash Brown because someone actually did DNA on him. The rest of them, it's just like another speaker said, we are just assuming what the dog's breed is. We don't always know, they may have a blocky head, so we can go off that, but the rest is just kind of a guess, unfortunately. There were some great speakers, I don't wanna take too much more time, but what I really, and I love that it's gonna be tabled too, makes me happy. But I want for pit bulls something that I want for myself. I want them to be judged, I wanna be judged by my actions and to be known without prejudices. Research keeps showing that the piddies in the shelters, they're passing temperament tests at a higher rate than many of the other well-loved breeds. So they are family pets. At this time in our history, unfortunately, pit bulls are the underdogs. As someone just said, it used to be the Doberman Pinscher, that was when I grew up, the Rottweiler, German Shepherd. And in some cases, these three are still discriminated against. But right now, it's a pit bull who's getting the worst rap right here and unfortunately in a lot of our communities. We are all guilty at one time or another of being afraid of something we don't understand or attaching a stereotype to something because of a news story, which they make it sometimes a little more than it is. The physical characteristic that dogs, or even humans for that matter, are born with are not and will never be a predictor of our behavior. Discrimination of any type should not have a home in our world. Dogs are heroes and that means all dogs, pit bulls included, because they help us with therapy, they're service dogs, they protect our communities, and as police canines. And overall, at National Dog Day, they make us feel better when we've had a bad day. So, thank you.
That concludes everyone who signed up. I'm opening this up for a discussion amongst the council members.
So, Councilmember Harmon, what was your plan?
I just planned to get with Chris and we're gonna work together to revamp this ordinance to try to create something that's, kinda like I said, is a hybrid. It's in between what has been presented now and the BSL that will have, there are some cities in Arkansas that have already done this, some of the cities that they mentioned that have gotten rid of BSL, have not just said, strike the BSL. They've said, we're gonna strike the BSL and we're gonna start allowing pit bulls in our city, but for pit bulls, there's gonna be a few extra restrictions. They're gonna have to be registered, they're gonna have to have chips, they're gonna have to be sterilized. You know, there's a few extra steps. I think all the dogs should be, just like she said, I think all dogs should be sterilized. But, and I'm, and I grew up raising dogs, raising English setters and selling them with my dad. So, but I still think we're past that time now. But, you know, just putting in an extra set of restrictions for the pit bulls so that we can kind of give ourselves a level of comfort. Not so much that it's prohibitive where nobody will adopt a pit bull and nobody will be able to bring pit bull, but kind of find that razor's edge that we can walk so that we can get a level of safety and still allow people to adopt those pit bulls out of our shelter. And because, I mean, at the rate we're going, we're gonna be a pit bull shelter and we're not gonna have any room for any other animals, any other dogs. And we can't do that, we can't, we can't allow that to happen. So we've got to find some middle ground and that's what Chris and I are gonna try to do.
Is Chris still here?
Yes, he is.
Chris, how many dogs do we have in our shelter right now? How many?
Chris, could you come up to the microphone, please, thank you.
So we have 34 dogs and how many of those are designated as unadoptable because they are part pit bull?
10 we have listed and we have six puppies that we don't know.
So 10, there are pit bulls out of 34, so 24 are adoptable? Or maybe six more maybes?
Yes.
So you still have, so 34, so you have, okay.
So, are the, the puppies, are they going to be then, these brand-new puppies labeled?
Usually we send them up north.
And that's another thing he and I were gonna talk to, talk about is about trying to find some places that would take the pit bulls, because I had some ideas on that that he hadn't thought of and we started knocking that around on Friday also about finding some places that would take the pit bulls in the meantime, so. And you, you mentioned that too.
Out of the Woods is the place that's supposed to be taking pit bulls, is it, over in South Blaskey County? And, you know, I really appreciate, you know, there's so many people that actually talked emotion, but I appreciate the ones that actually sent documents- I did too. -that actually had the research. And the research, I mean, I only have a three-inch, a six-inch folder of all the comments I've had about pit bull issues on this and responded to every one of them, but the comments were, said, it's not the emotion that I really care about. So tell me, you know, everybody loves them, that's not gonna win my vote one way or the other. It's what are the facts about them?
Right.
And there's some articles that, I don't know that we all got, because I don't know who, what people sent you. But there's two or three articles, and we got an email, I think everybody got an email, when the guy talked about the Siegfried Roy.
Yeah, right, right, that was an early one, that was an early one.
I thought that was a great analogy there. That, you know, that for 20 years, they, they had the lion and he's not gonna hurt, he's pet, he's everybody else, and it's just like, then he about takes his head off.
Right, he over-disciplined it one time and, yeah.
And, you know, it's an animal, that's why it's called an animal. It's the number of people that, that ask us to continue to please put the human life before the dog's life. Those, that's been a large, large number of emails. Of this stack of 50 or 60 emails, I disallowed about 20 of them because it was a form letter that says, get rid of BSL, and it was just like, everybody sent the same letter. That's not original. So that's something, but the ones, there were some from the magazine, it's when PETA.
Yeah, PETA, it was PETA.
PETA, that actually talked about the concerns about having pit bulls in your community and some of the issues about it. And then there's the one from the magazine about the pros and cons about keeping pit bulls. That's an article we all need to read because it actually says, these are the reasons that you should allow pit bulls, these are the reasons you should not. And the arguments are there, research-based. So it's, I mean, I don't, Chris, you're having this terrible frown like I'm really upsetting you.
No, just the thing about the lion threw me off, so.
Well, and then, and Councilmember Williams, that was the purpose behind bringing in the top animal control shelter manager in the entire state of Arkansas. That's, that's why we, the two veterinarians from our community, because that is their specialty. So that, that was the, the purpose of that was to give as much of actual expert, not some of these, you know, out-of-state lions.
I think when you're, when you're the employed veterinarian for the city, you're a little prejudiced one way or the other. So I'm not sure that that's a good, a good analogy there.
There are other experts and other, other information too. Just one we received today, Denver dropped their BSL language. And in, they dropped their BSL language two years ago and in '22, just January 1 to July 8 of 2022, they real, they had 88 pit bull bites that they had not had previously after the dropping the BSL language. And 27 bites reported from Labrador Retrievers, which was number two. And 11% of their pit bull bites went to, I mean, it, it, it was a total disaster for the city of Denver when they dropped their BSL language. It's not, I know it's not a comparable city.
I need for, okay, please.
And I know it's not a comparable city, but I'm just-
I asked, I asked, please, everybody be respectful. This is the council member's opportunity and to speak amongst themselves. I understand that this is a hot topic and very emotional and I appreciate everyone being here to speak on this, but let's please give the council members the opportunity to freely be able to speak without comment at this time, please.
But this is the type of information that Councilmember Williams is talking about that we're receiving. And, you know, I receive information on the, on the flip side of this, but, you know, it's, it's these things that, these are the type of experts, the type, and this is not even expert, this is data. This is simply factual data that I'm being sent that, you know, can't be argued with. It simply is what it is. And I understand and I take into account when I look at it that Denver is not comparable to Sherwood, but I also have to consider, you know, the fact, and one of the things that makes me worry and that Chris and I talked about and Chris admitted Friday is a concern, is that we're sandwiched between Jacksonville and North Little Rock, both of which still have BSL language in their ordinance, is correct?
Yes.
And which Councilmember Lilly brought up the first time we've talked about this, that if we take our BSL language out, we also have to do something to protect ourselves from just becoming a funnel for all of the pit bulls that they are in, that are currently in their shelters. And that is people to start dumping in Sherwood. Now, we can't take one, we can't, you know, if somebody brings a pit bull to our shelter and they live in Little Rock, we won't take it. So instead, they just come over at midnight and drop it off at the shelter and leave, dump it out of their truck and leave, and it's in our city, roaming our streets until we pick it up. And so we've got to be careful about those things as well. So this is so many factors, so many issues that we have to think about. We can't just say, BSL language is bad, pit bulls are good, let's get rid of it and do it like that because there's just so many possible outcomes, so many factors that have to be considered by Chris, by us. And it's just, it's gonna take a little bit more time. And we're gonna have to try a little bit harder, but I think, I think we can get there.
I don't know how many you take the leader, but on the front page of the leader, you saw the case for the Lonoak family, where the gentleman was awarded $15 million for the pit bull that killed him last October 23. So it's like, it's not that far away that some of these things are happening. And it's not, yes, I mean, it's not like 20 years ago, this was less than a year ago, that these are real.
Well, I'll say from my seat that over the past, you know, 60, 90 days, whatever it's been, man, I've done a whole lot of research too. I've gotten emails that everyone's gotten and what have you. And I have absolutely learned a whole bunch. I've learned a whole bunch that, you know, the myths and, and, you know, the things that just simply aren't true. But, but one thing that really sticks out to me, and, and I'm not sure how we deal with this as a community, is every reputable organization that I've read a letter on the pros and cons of pit bulls, and they're, they're talking full-breed pit bulls, not, not mixed breeds, not whatever, but, but they- pit bulls, not, not mixed breeds, not whatever, but, but they stress, stress the importance of, of socializing those at a young age with, with, with humans and with other dogs. And, and without that, their, their potential of being, I don't, I don't even really know what the word is. I mean, you know, being more aggressive, I'll just put it that way, is, is exponentially greater than, than it is with some other breeds. Does that make them a bad dog? No, I, I don't think so. But, but it does bring in more things to the mix that, that have to be considered. I own a silver lab. Labs are known for chewing. I mean, that's what they do when they're puppies. Their, mine chewed me out of house and home. It's, and in that case, it is the breed. Everybody I've ever known that's had a lab puppy, I mean, for two years, two and a half years, they, I mean, it chewed my deck, chewed my water hoses, chewed, I mean, anything and everything it could get its teeth on. My golden retrievers didn't do that. That's not what that breed does, you know? So, there, there's a lot to be considered here, and, and I appreciate trying to take a, a more judicious, balanced approach to, to how we look at this. Because it, it is a divisive issue. It, it's not one that's easy to sit back and say, you know, this is right or this is wrong. You know, so I, I'm anxious to see what, what comes about in, in the coming months, and we'll roll from there, I guess. So, thanks for hearing me out.
Any other comments by the council?
We need a roll call.
At this time, we'll have a roll call on the motion presented by Councilmember Harmon.
Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next up, an ordinance assessing a one-mill tax on real and personal property as a new millage.
Mayor, you want to wait a minute?
Oh, sure. Do you all need a recess or anything to go to the bathroom?
Yeah, let's take a break.
We will, we will take a five-minute recess for some of our council members to.
Some means the old ones. Some means the old ones.
So, we will, we will, we will resume at seven forty-two.
Three hours and two waters in his hands. Hey, Harmon. Harmon, it's called hydration.
Hi, there you doing. I'm glad you're here, always. I'm not allowing you.
What do y'all think? Cut the feed and then start a new livestream, part two?
Yeah.
It's at four twenty-two. And councilmembers, but please come back to your seats. Those in the audience, if you'll please have a seat.
Y'all boiling the chocolate down there?
And then you move forward to the meeting.
I have so many minutes.
We have two councilmembers.
We have two councilmembers that are not back yet. We'll hold off a moment or two more. They should be back here any moment now. We'll be resuming with item number eight. I'm going to go ahead and read the ordinance. We've got an ordinance assessing a one-mill tax on real and personal property as a new millage certifying to the Pulaski County Clerk, the new millage and the existing 1.3 millage to be levied by the City of Sherwood on the taxable real and personal property for the tax year of 2024, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. This was read once at the July meeting. The intent is for it to go the full reading, so this is the second reading. At this time, we have a presentation by our finance director and our chief of police. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to, there was some confusion that went out after the meeting last month. There were some things that got reported that were misconstrued or just incorrect. But, so, we wanted to, we, I, I appreciate your indulgence for just a few minutes so we can kind of go over a couple of things. And I went over this with most of y'all, so this is not the first time you've heard it. But for the public, I want to make sure that they understand kind of where this is coming from. So, we have had some expenses that have come up that a lot of it is state mandated, that, that are going to significantly impact the city's budget. And so, like I told y'all last month, one of the things that I, that I want to do if, if I know that I'm going to create a burden on the city's budget, I want to be able to offer up at least a suggestion for y'all to consider. So, I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about kind of some of the things that have happened. On the slides, you'll see, and I'm going to talk to this just a second, then I'm going to let Colleen speak to the actual impact as far as money goes. But in 2018, in Mississippi County and Bliville, there was a, there was a court case that took place, and the Supreme Court made a ruling in 2018 that mandated that the county jails, the counties, can impose a daily rate on municipalities. So, since that's happened, almost all the counties at this point have started imposing a daily rate on inmates that we have inside the county. So, I'm going to step aside and let Colleen talk to the, the, the way that's impacted us in the last few years and, and kind of what's coming. So, I'll let Colleen.
So, if you can see here, in 2014, our jail bill, the annual cost was eighty thousand eight hundred dollars. Additionally, from 2004 to 2013, the annual average total was eighty-three thousand one hundred and fifty. So, not a lot of fluctuation there. 2024, our projected annual bill this year is three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. So, that's a three hundred and eighty-nine percent increase. In 2021, the jail bill was a hundred and eighty-three thousand. In 2022, the jail bill was four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. That was the highest. So, we've come down a little bit, but we're still on trend. You know, this bill is just really increasing every year. The daily rate for the jail is sixty-three dollars and twenty-one cents a day for anyone that's at the, at the jail. So, you know, this increase is just something that has been, you know, so large over time when, for such a long period of time, it was something that was very stable. So, and then just that astronomical increase when you're jumping from, you know, a hundred and eighty-three thousand to four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and now around four hundred thousand annually is just something that is out of our control as we just have to pay the bill that, that we get from the county. So, this is a cost that is, you know, something that is out of our control that, that we have to pay.
So, as my dad used to say, let me tell you where the rubber meets the road on that. As a city, we take pride in the fact that we have a low crime rate. And I've told y'all before, you know, we, we set smack dab between North Little Rock and Jacksonville, both of which have much higher crime rates than we do. One of the reasons that I believe that that crime rate is what it is is because we aggressively enforce the law. When we arrest somebody, we take them to jail. We don't cite them and release them because the only thing that we've done is we just send them down the street to, to bother the next person, so we take them to jail. When that happens, we're getting charged a daily rate. And I don't think that the answer is to quit doing things the way that we do. And I really don't believe that's what y'all want us to do. But I want you to understand that the, a lot of, a lot of municipalities, that's the, that's the stance that they're taking, and I just don't feel like that's the right stance for us. So, that's how the jail bill affects us, and that's how, you know, we have to, we have to plan accordingly, and we have to act accordingly. And, and I think that we, we need to continue what we're doing. So, I don't see that that jail bill will, will go down. You know, it's, it's just one of those things. And it's going to fluctuate year to year based on the county's expenditures. They're going to adjust, but, but that's kind of where we've been. So, we wanted to let you know what the county jail bill was and how that affects us. The second thing that, that I want to talk to you about.
Chief.
I'm sorry.
Before you move on too far.
Yes, sir.
So, when, when we arrest somebody and we send them to, to jail, as we, as we likely should, how, how long do they stay there? I mean, are, are they there for waiting for trial? I mean, what, what, what does that look like in the grand scheme of time?
So, so when we arrest somebody, they go to jail and they have their first appearance in arraignment. And in that first appearance, the judge is going to set bond. So, when that bond is set, they stay, they either stay in jail until they make bond or they, they have to wait until sixty days. And so, where that, where that sixty days comes into play is that if they haven't made bond and there has not been a file that has been picked up by the prosecutor's office, they remain on our bill for sixty days. I would like to tell you that, that that's something that I've spoken to Will Jones, the Pulaski County prosecutor, and they're doing the best that they can. But as you can imagine, they have pretty heavy, they have pretty heavy caseloads that come in. So, they do the best that they can. We get the paperwork to them, the case files to them as, as expeditiously as we can to get that, and to get that, for the, for them to pick it up. Once the, once Circuit Court picks that case up and it's assigned to a division of Circuit Court, at that point, they become a county prisoner and not a Sherwood prisoner. So, the majority of these should be sixty days or less before they turn into a county prisoner, unless it's something that's a misdemeanor offense that they're in there on Sherwood charges. And that's something that I know the judge tries to be, I think, he tries to be mindful of that for the cost for the city, but at the same time, and there are some times that they need to be in jail. So, you know, he looks at that. So, it's kind of a, some of that's beyond our control, some of that is just, that's, that's the way it is. I mean, if we put them in jail and we don't have one hundred percent control over the extent of time they stay there.
Chief, can you, could you also speak to the, what happens with the process with roll call? Because typically, we don't get charged for two days because of, of how it's calculated. It typically ends up being not one, but two.
Yeah, so they do their roll call at seven o'clock in the morning, and they, the arraignment is at seven-thirty in the morning. So, we can, we can take somebody to jail at six o'clock in the morning, and they can be released on bond at eight o'clock in the morning. But because they were there at seven o'clock during roll call, we would get charged two days for that. So, and that's, that's their rule, and it, my understanding, it's always been that way. But it does, it does get, so for almost anybody we take over there, even if they're released immediately, we're going to get charged two days.
That does not seem right.
Not at all.
Yes. And, and we, we have done everything we can. The cities have gotten together. We've worked with the municipal league. It's, we just, once again, this is something of which we don't get a say and we don't get to determine. But if you'd like to continue on.
Can we ask a good question?
No, we can't. Go ahead.
All right. Does the council members have any other questions about the jail bill before I move on? Okay, so the second thing that is of significance that, that I want to bring to your attention is this nine-one-one call center. So, the, the state legislature mandated that they're called, and, and I'm going to use the term PSAP, which is a primary safety answering point. So, a PSAP is, is a nine-one-one call center. When you pick up the phone and you dial nine-one-one, whoever answers that phone, that, that's a PSAP. So, the, the nine-one-one board has told us that we have to, or has told everybody in the state of Arkansas that we have to reduce the number of PSAPs back to seventy-seven, and that has to be in effect by January of twenty-five. So, a couple of years ago, when this mandate came out, and I'm just going to kind of just give you the, the quick version of this, but there are, there were six PSAPs in, in Pulaski County. Pulaski County was, was given the mandate that we had to go down to three PSAPs. So, that means we, you know, you got to cut that in half. Well, when you look at the sheer call volume and population, Little Rock handles more calls, and they have more population than the other five combined. So, it stood to reason that Little Rock would be a standalone PSAP, which they will be. So, that means the other five had to figure out how to, how to merge into two PSAPs. So, you're talking about Maumell, Jacksonville, North Little Rock, Sherwood, and Pulaski County. So, what's going to happen is, in the early stages, there was an agreement made between the, the municipalities that Jacksonville and Pulaski County would merge. And my understanding is that that merge is supposed to go live September one, that they're going to be completely merged. Maumell, North Little Rock, and Sherwood entered into agreement that we would, that we would combine as one PSAP. So, the way that the plan is right now, that that's going to look like this, North Little Rock has said they are the largest of the three, with us being second. North Little Rock, so I guess I should say this, none of the PSAPs, none of the buildings where they meet now, where they work out of, is large enough to house all three together. So, they're going to have to relocate to another location. North Little Rock has a, has a location that they have suggested that we merge into. That location is in their administrative building, and it's going to require construction and the equipment put in, and that would happen anywhere that, that it went. But they're estimating that consolidated communication center build-out at six-point-five million dollars. So, when you take into consideration the call volume and the population, there, it's divided based on that calculation. So, that calculation came out to Sherwood's part being twenty-eight percent that it would, we would be responsible for. So, I think, I think that Maumell's was like eighteen percent, and then North Little Rock was sixty or fifty-something percent, whatever the math adds up to. But ours is twenty-eight percent. So, we would be responsible for twenty-eight percent of that six-point-five million, which is going to come out to around one-point-eight million. There is a, there is a hope, and we have applied for, and I say we, the three cities have applied for a grant through Senator Bozeman's office, a federal grant, and there is a hope that that money will be, be given to us on a grant that would cover that six-point-five million dollars. I don't know that we will get the full amount. I hope we do. But even if we do, the fact of the matter is, there's still going to be an increase for us in what it's going to cost to operate this communication center. North Little Rock is going to, they're going to absorb all the employees. That's the plan right now, that they will absorb all of the employees, so they will all become North Little Rock employees. They will provide all the HR function, their retirement, their salary and everything. Now, how that affects us is this, because they're going to combine and they're all going to become North Little Rock employees, they pay more than what we pay as far as their communication center. So, when that happens, there's going to be an increase in labor cost, if nothing else. So, our twenty-eight percent and our funding that we get from the nine-one-one board now, all of that will go into North Little Rock, that North Little Rock Communication Center, which will be a joint. communication center. So we know our costs are going to go up. We, but we really can't, I can't stand here right now and tell you the, the extent of how much it's going to go up because a lot of that's going to depend on grant funding, what we get. There is a, a hope and a belief that the 911 board will give us some funding, but it's probably not going to be anywhere near what it's going to take to, to fund that. So that's just kind of where we're at. Colleen, do you have anything to add on that?
What do we know about the grant, do you think?
My, do you know? My understanding is we should know sometime this quarter.
So the, the 1.8 i- is a one-time facility build out? And then there's going to be an annual cost to, you know, to continue to maintain that? A- any, any ideas, thoughts on what that would be?
I don't. The, you are correct, the 1.8 would be a one-time cost. The, the, of course, there's, there's involved in this are maintenance contracts there for all the equipment, the, the increase in, in the, in the payroll, labor cost. But I, I don't until, until we know exactly what, they're still in the process of bidding that. And, and I will say this, Colleen brought this up to me this afternoon. It was a good point I hadn't really thought about. But we started this process last fall looking at this. And so that $6.5 million number was based off of projections from last year. So cost, it, it could go up. I doubt seriously it goes down, but it's possible that it could go up.
There, there was also some concern that you voiced about the fact of the attempted assassination of Donald Trump may diminish our chances of it because this falls under security. And there, there clearly needed to be more security in terms of, on a federal level.
Right. Federal agencies also have the ability to apply for this grant funding. And so there is a concern that, that some of that grant funding could go to federal agencies because of the increase in, in security. But that's, that's speculation. We don't know for sure, but that's a possibility certainly.
Was this, I'm sorry.
No, you go later.
Were this, is the state giving some funds for equipment and?
So that, so right now, we get, we get monies from the 911 board. All PSAPs get some funding. And ours is, she can tell you better than I can.
And I know that we were looking at, on the high end, $400,000 is what the state would give. And on the low end, $200,000. Is that about accurate?
What, what was that range again?
200 to 400.
That would, that would be what the state gives for the one-time initial consolidation.
Yes, ma'am.
But annually, we do get approximately like $460,000 each year. But when we consolidate, those funds would go to North, North Little Rock as the main PSAP. But it would go towards, you know, our annual maintenance costs.
How is that figured? I guess it's figured now easily because we're separate, but that, that $460,000, how is that figured percentage-wise? What is that based off of? And will that change once it's consolidated? Will we still be getting that same amount or will that, a certain amount just go to the new PSAP per se?
It's based on call volume and population now. And that's the reason why call volume and population was the criteria that was used on consolidation, because that's the way that they award that, that funding.
So in future, it still will be allocated in that manner?
Yeah. So what's going to happen is, is they'll look, they do this every year. They'll look at the, they'll look at the call volume and population from each jurisdiction. And they will then in turn give that funding to the PSAP. So say we get 400, you know, $450,000 is what Sherwood's part is. Say North Little Rock gets $1 million and Maumell gets $200,000. All of that will go into the, to the operation of the center. And then that overall cost, labor, the maintenance contracts, all of that, you'll take that amount off of that and then we'll pay, we'll pay, we're basically becoming a tenant at that point and we'll pay 28%. As it stands right now, based on current population and call volume, we would be paying 28% of whatever the bill was, total operational cost.
I can see paying 28% for the, to establish it. But once it's established, both the building and equipment now belongs to North Little Rock. So why would we be paying to maintain their property? We're only renters there. I, I don't mind paying the rent, but I don't want to be paying their maintenance fees or their insurance. I mean, those things that, because if this all dissolved in two years, that's their building to sell, do with what they want, and we would get nothing back.
We're paying 28% of their maintenance fees, and that is typical with a tenant. A tenant would pay up their percentage of the maintenance fees.
But let me, let me just, for clarification, when I'm talking about maintenance contracts, I'm not talking about necessarily building maintenance. I'm talking about equipment, the radio systems.
I'm fine for rent and, and, okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's all, we pay that now. We have to pay those maintenance contracts now. So.
For the equipment.
For equipment, right. So that'll all, obviously, there will be more equipment. But that will all be pushed into that one center. All that funding will go to the center. And then we will, whatever the total operational cost is, we would be, as it stands, responsible for 28% of that, as it stands right now. But I do want to say this, in the future, as we grow, that, that, that percentage could increase as well. If our population rises and our call volume rises, then that, that's going to be, that's part of the, that's part of the MOU that we have with them, is that that would be, that's going to be reevaluated on an annual basis. So that's, that's at the current.
But that would also go to the same, as with either of the other municipalities also.
Correct.
So the same could happen with them. If their call volumes or their populations increase, then our percentages could go down as well, you know? I mean.
Yeah. North Little Rock is not growing at the same rate.
As we are.
As we are. One thing to keep in mind too, as I learn more about this process in the meetings, so what we pay our employees is quite a bit less than what North Little Rock pays. Maumell pays less than what, what we pay. And that, that's not unusual in terms of size of cities and so forth. But once they all go together, then you've got the Sherwood and Maumell employees that were paying less, now they have to be put at the same level with the same benefits and same retirement as those in North Little Rock. That's part of where those ongoing costs increase. And that's really the only fair thing to do as they become North Little Rock employees and they're all working in the same place, doing the same job and so forth.
Are all of our employees going to transfer over there?
Yes, ma'am.
They all are? How many do we have in dispatch?
We, we are slotted for 16. We've got two openings right now.
So we have 14 current employees?
Yes, ma'am.
So the state made this change, but there's, they're not supplying any funds. So they made this change and all these.
Unfunded mandates.
All these cities are just forking over big bucks like this? I mean.
Well, I think that when you look across the state of Arkansas, the, the counties that it's really going to affect are obviously Washington County, Pulaski County, maybe Craighead County, because we have, we have larger cities that are, that are a part of that. The problem, the biggest problem for, for us is, so I would say out of the 75 counties in the state of Arkansas, the majority of them, to consolidate requires pulling up another chair and putting another terminal in. Because they're small enough, you know, they, they were only running one or two consoles that it's probably not going to be as burdensome as it will be for some of, for some of us because they don't have to, to build a new facility. For us, the problem that we run into is that North Little Rock's current facility will not house the number of employees that's going to be required to, to, to operate the center. We don't have a facility big enough either, and, and neither does Maumell. So there's going to have to be.
Were they current, were we currently are housed?
Correct, correct.
There's no alternate, when you're talking about this kind of increase, there's no alternate to say, oh, that wasn't what we meant to do to burden.
Yeah. I, I did speak about this at the legislative luncheon with the chamber. This is exactly what, and I spoke to, you know, our representatives there. This is, you know, sometimes there's unforeseen consequences. And, and talking to the 911 board, and we have talked and pleaded and begged, and we are in a unique situation where it's three class one cities having to merge into one. So like, you know, for example, Conway, having Faulkner County come into, you know, be a part of, their PSAP is no big deal. Cabot, now hosing, housing, excuse me, Lone Oak County, it's really not a, a big burden. This is an unusual situation where you are, you've got three first-class cities, and that's what we have pleaded with them over. And none of the city's current operations can accommodate two other class one cities coming in. So it, it is a unique situation. We are still looking for solutions and trying, but, but no matter what happens, we wanted you guys to be aware that even in a best-case scenario where we're able to come up with a way to, to pay for, you know, the, the build-out of the PSAP, there's still going to be ongoing costs in terms of paying for the people who are actually working there. So it's increased labor costs if for nothing else, those, we've got increases coming down the pike. And then if you want to.
Yeah. Any other question about PSAP before I move on to?
Well, I'm just going to say that, I mean, you know, so the, the, the cost is going to be there regardless of whether we operate it or someone else operates it. We, we lose control over some of that cost. That, that's the issue. Because I mean, you know, the way I see it, I mean, we, we no longer have control over the labor costs. We don't have control over, you know, any of the other operating expenses that, that take to operate that PSAP. We don't have control over what equipment they have, when they upgrade it, when they change it out. I mean, none, none of that becomes within our control. Am I, am I seeing that right?
Yes, sir.
Am I out in left field?
Yep.
You are correct.
Do you want to go to the next one?
All right. So, so the next thing is, I want to talk just a little bit about kind of some of what our costs are that is relevant to this conversation. So I had this conversation with the mayor a little bit ago and, and we discussed, you know, what operational costs are today. Things have, and, and I know it has to, to the, to the general public, to us in our personal lives as well. But we used to, you know, five, six, seven years ago, we were buying Impala police cars and we were paying $22,000, $23,000 for a car. They no longer make those. We're waiting on the state contract to come out right now. But what we're looking at right now, we're spending somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000 now for a vehicle. The outfit on these vehicles are almost as much as what the car costs. So you're looking at, you know, $80,000 to $100,000 to outfit a police car. By the time we purchase it and outfit it, you're looking at about $80,000 to $100,000 to outfit one, where that used to be almost in, cut in half of what that is now, or used to be. So the, that is, that is an expense. We are required now, I say required, we require of ourselves, and I think it's the, it's the responsible thing to do, that we put body cams on all of our officers that are on the street. Those things are expensive. We have contracts that we have to maintain. Those are costs that we didn't have 10 or 15 years ago. Our radio systems, we have our portable radios, this radio right here, this cost about $9,000 to buy new. So all of our radios right now, we have, I think, five or 10 that are still covered under warranty. So as our radios go out, we have to replace those radios because they're not, they don't make them anymore, they can't fix them, they're not covered under warranty. So the, there's just a lot of cost that are incurred. And, you know, I mean, you know, labor cost, I mean, the, the biggest part of our budget, just like every other department, is, is, is salary. And I mean, all of those things go up. So that's the reason why we brought this suggestion. And I'm going to, I'll answer any questions that y'all have, and then I'm going to let Colleen talk about money. She's a lot better at that than I am, kind of what, what this, this one mill would do.
Well, I had a, I've had a couple of conversations and, with people. And one of them, I did tell, you know, I was telling them that a lot of it was, you know, we did raise the uniform police salaries last month.
Sure.
4% in that public safe, you know, a lot of people are concerned about public safety. So, I mean, that, that's just going to compound every year. Once we did that, there's, there's ongoing cost every year. So this is not going to go away.
No, ma'am, unfortunately, no.
Chief, this would be a very small consolation, but I'm just wondering in general, when, when the, the merge of the PSAP happens, obviously, we, we're set up now for 16. Is, like anything else electronic, most of our stuff then pretty well becomes obsolete. Is there, is there any cost recovery there? Even though it'd be a minimal amount, I'm sure. But what happens to the stuff the city owns at that point?
So all of the, all of the equipment that is viable from us and Maumell will, will move. I mean, those, that's all been taken into consideration, so.
So it's stuff that will merge together okay with?
Right. With what they can. Now, a lot of it's going to be incompatible because you're taking three systems and having to build out one. So some will be compatible, some will not. There has to be a, there, we have to have a, a backup communication center. So some of that will probably go into a backup communication center that, in case something happened to, to the main PSAP, we'd have a backup to fall back to as well.
Think natural disaster.
I'll let you go with money.
You need to go back one.
Go back, go back. No, I think this is the next one.
I think we're missing the slide that shows, yep, that shows, oh, is it the next one after that?
We have next. Next one? Okay. So this is just the basic that one, one mil would provide the city approximately $649,000. And then the next slide, this is kind of a, shows an estimate of what it would, you know, increase for an average home price. So looking on Zillow, the average home price in 2024 in Sherwood is, you know, close to $225,000. So looking at, you know, a house that sold for $226,000, the current millage, this is based off of, in Sherwood City Limits, in Pulaski County Special School District. So that would obviously be the small subset, subset in North Little Rock School District is at a different millage rate. So just keep that in mind. So the total tax amount would be, you know, $1,186.48. So the proposed millage, this would change from .0521 to .0531. So one mil is that point, you know, 001. So if you can see the difference there. So that would increase $32.37 a year in this example.
My big question is, we don't know how much we need yet though, right? Because we don't know what the new cost will be, the new, the increase. And so that, I, I'm concerned we're doing this too early. And then that would put the council in a position of having to do it again if, when the new employees, those 16 folks go over, and then that $648,000 isn't enough for the two things combined. You see what I, I mean, why, why are we doing it before we know what our exact cost will be?
So I think there's a few different reasons. One I would say is that Sherwood hasn't had a millage that is in the general fund that can support public safety in this way. We are very reliant on sales taxes. So, you know, this would help, you know, when you look at $650,000, that's not a large amount of money. And when you look at. When you look at our sales tax revenue that the city generates, you know, that, that amount is much larger. But sales tax revenue can fluctuate so much, and you don't know what can happen, you know, during economic, you know, ebbs and flows. And so while this, you know, isn't a huge amount in comparison to what the city has in sales tax revenue, which I believe is about sixty-five percent of Sherwood's general fund budget, I have the number written down somewhere. But I think this kind of helps, you know, buffer or even out some of those ebbs and flows that we have. And it can kind of help get that baseline there. So it definitely gets us to a starting point on where we know for sure that we have some of these increases that have, you know, we've already seen with things like the jail bill, and we know that we have increases coming up. And while, you know, you're right that we don't know what other increases are on the horizon as far as exact amounts, we are on a timeline that this has to go to the quorum court by the beginning of October. And so in order to kind of have a starting point, I think it's reasonable to, you know, have a set number to propose that at least kind of gets us on a turn to start having some sort of diversification of revenues in the general fund budget.
And it's also a.
And it's also a year in arrears, so.
Well, this is setting twenty twenty-four collectible in twenty-five, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It's going to be a while before any money is collected. And so you do it now, hoping that the one mill will help because you're going, you're going to need the money. You can't wait till you need the money to collect it, but with property taxes, I guess is what I'm trying to say. You can't wait till you need it to implement it because then it's a year and a half down the road before you collect, before you collect it.
I think what I'm hearing from April, and tell me if I'm wrong, excuse me, Ms. Broderick, is that in looking at the overview of the other municipalities that have, have done a mill, many of them are like point four, or one point two, or one point three, or two point one. They're different. It's not just a solid one percent. And what I heard her say when she said that, my mind says, well, is one enough? Or does it need to be one point two? Or does it need to be one point one? Is that what you're saying?
I, I, yes, I, I feel more comfortable. A, a millage increase is probably in our future, but the burden of increasing that twice falls on these eight people if we don't have a good number to know. What are, what shortfall are we really trying to answer to? You know, so what I don't want to do is do a one mill now, and then this time next year, go, well, our cost was more than we expected, so really, we should have done one point four. So that's why I'm saying, why not pause, see what we really need so that the council isn't in a position to continuously vote tax increases that the public didn't vote for?
Well, and I want to throw my two cents in, but I wanted to impress Beverly's. It'd actually be twelve, it'd actually be twelve and a half cent, I guess, since there's eight of us.
Oh, my God, yes.
Okay. Just being adversarial, just, just to think about this. And I agree, I think Charlie brought it up, and, and Colleen said it tonight, too. You know, yeah, having additional revenue streams is important, no doubt, for a, for a, you know, city-based sales tax is, is the only thing we have. But, you know, in a year and a half, we've stood up here, and I'm not saying some of this stuff's not justified, but we've increased fees for city rentals. We've increased fees for permits within the city. We've increased water for people. We've increased recycling bill. It was not really in our control, but the advertisement for the district fire department. So we, we keep digging into people's pockets. And maybe right now is not the right time, is all, all I'm saying.
I see.
Because we are in a tough economic time. And I know we can look at this and say, you know, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar home, it equals this much, this and that. And, and I saw a comment where somebody said, well, if you can afford that kind of house, you can afford the sixty-something dollars. And that's, I, I don't know that that's necessarily a way to look at things because people, in election year, with everything else going on, you got a lot of, you know, people are tight right now across the board. It's just something to think about.
It's not tight.
You know, I'll share, you know, pretty much the same thing I did, you know, in our last council meeting. I mean, you know, right now, I mean, we're, we're looking at, you know, fourteen point six million in, in, in the general fund savings account. And, and we're expecting to bring in another twenty million dollars this year that, that has yet to be collected. From, from a budgetary perspective, I, I just don't think it's needed. I, I don't, at this time, I don't, I, I get that there's an increase in cost. Man, I, I understand that. Act eight twenty-two in two thousand and nineteen that allowed municipalities to, you know, get tax revenue off of internet sales has bolstered this city and many others where, where we've seen brick and mortar continue to decline. But those internet sales, I mean, you know, they're, they're running pretty strong. And I don't see, you know, my Amazon habits changing. I don't know about other people, but, you know, I mean, you know, that's a revenue source that, that just five years ago, we did not have.
Exactly.
And, and now we get that revenue. So, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, I don't think that, that that six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that we would get off of a one-mill tax, I, I, I don't think it's needed. I, I think, you know, we're, we're able to, you know, cover what increases we have today with what we have. And, you know, I, I'm all about diversifying income. I mean, I think that's smart, long-term. But let's, look, look at how we, you know, you know, do that overall. Is there an opportunity to have a millage increase and, and a sales tax decrease? Maybe it's just, you know, three-eighths of a cent. I, I don't know what that looks like. But if you're looking for diversification, you know, look at all of it, not just how to add to. And, and then, you know, go to the, go to the people if you need to, based on a need, not based on cost or going up. I mean, you know, two percent on fifty dollars is two percent, you know, is more, excuse me, than two percent on forty dollars. So as the, the value of, you know, what people are purchasing or, or what they're buying, as it goes up, they're, they're paying, you know, that, whatever that sales tax is, they're paying that against a higher-priced item, which increases the amount of revenue. So again, I, I don't think the money is needed. I, I do like the idea of diversification, but I, I don't think that that's right, right now. And that, that's my view and opinion.
If I could just speak really quickly to the, like, budgeted reserves and, and fund balance. Because just as a, as a clarifying point, the city does have approximately twenty million as fund balance in the general fund. And I know, as we've discussed before, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you have at least two months of budgeted, budgetary either revenues or expenditures to hold in reserves. And so if you look at what that means for the city of Sherwood, right now, our budgeted revenues are thirty-eight million in the general fund. However, nine point three million are, of that thirty-eight million, are budgeted from our current reserves. So just our regular general fund budgeted reserves are twenty-eight million. So when you think about our current fund balance of, you know, twenty million, and you subtract nine million from that, you're down to eleven million. And then when you think about, okay, I need two to three months of reserves held aside, you're looking at between four point four and six point eight of fund balance, which is a good number because you're thinking about what you're holding in reserves. But it's, you know, not twenty million because you're thinking about, we already have nine million right now in our budget that we've set aside for various capital projects and that kind of thing. So when you're using those reserves each year to supplement your annual budget, that's just a thing to consider, so.
I wanted to speak real quick to Councilmember Wade. In terms of increasing our rental rates, that's because basically the city was paying for people to have parties. So when we did an evaluation on it, you, you have to look at it and go, you know, should you, should Joe Q. Public be paying for someone's, you know, wedding reception? No. So we have brought those things into alignment. It's not like our costs, you know, that we are charging an astrical, you know, number as far as that goes.
We also, we also became competitive with all the other similar facilities in the area. We're not charging more.
And, and our. Some of it may be justified, but the end result is, it's a cost.
Well, only if you choose.
You pass along.
Right, if you choose to rent that. I mean, if you choose to have that party, then absolutely. The other thing, too, that you, you know, you mentioned, you know, permits, we are still, our permits are still under what everybody else is. So, I mean, nothing that we have done has been out of line. This council hasn't passed anything that has been like crazy to make it more expensive than, you know, any other city, not by any stretch of the means. In terms of water and things like that, I, I don't know if what C A W. is relevant to what we have to do in terms of operating the city. The recycling, it's, you have the option of either we have recycling or we don't. The, the residents of Sherwood have made it really clear that they do want recycling. We are looking at everything we can, from more of a business standpoint, and doing evaluations and going, okay, what pays us dividends, what doesn't? How we, we can invest reserves? What can we do to streamline operations, get more grants, do more with less? But at the end of the day, we do have expenses that are going up. And you don't want to wait until all of a sudden you're in a budgetary crisis, and you have to wait a year and a half in which to get out of it because we've gone through years where, because we are only sales tax-based, we were in serious jeopardy of being able to keep up basic services to our residents. We were able to get through that time. But if we suffer big downturns in the economy, it, it could happen again. And I do believe that the sales tax for everybody has flattened out. It's, so unfortunately, we're not seeing the fact that, you know, goods have gone up a certain amount, and so therefore, the amount we are getting has gone up. That's really not what's happening right now as we're seeing with revenue that's coming in, although our expenses are indeed going up.
Can I, I have a question. I don't have my sheet from last time about the library millage. When is the library millage expiring?
It's set to expire during twenty twenty-five.
What month?
It varies from the trustees, they.
Mid, mid twenty twenty-five.
As soon as they pay off.
So once that expires, then we have that freed up, okay?
So.
We have one individual that signed up to speak to this item, can we?
Let me ask, I got another question, Colleen. I want to reiterate some of those numbers you gave because I wrote some of them down. Okay, and tell me if I have these right. You said our fund balance is about twenty million, right?
Yes.
And then you said, and we have enough that nine mills become our reserves. So that takes our fund balance down to eleven million.
Yes.
And then you said that because we prudent financing has two months.
At least two.
At least two months in reserve. So if you took our thirty-eight million budget and took, you know, a sixth of that, that'd be six point three million. So of our eleven million, if we add two months in reserve, that's six point three million. So we should have seventeen point three million at all times, correct? Is that the number you got?
Well, you know, since it's whatever is your normal operating expenses, so the number that I would use would be about twenty-eight million divided by twelve because.
I did thirty-eight million.
Right, but nine million of that is like capital, right, so.
Perfect, that's what. I knew I didn't get the same number, I didn't know what was the difference. Okay, thank you.
And also, we do, as Colleen explained to me, we have to be more conservative because of the fact that we do not have a millage because of sales tax potential fluctuations.
Yeah, and what, what number did you say we had for capital projects?
Well, our budgeted reserves in the general fund are about nine point three million, and a lot, and most of those are all capital, capital items that we budgeted.
And remember, we had the large one. Five million.
Facility that was five million.
Um, did you, sir, did you still want to take your three minutes? All right. If you'll, once again, as everybody's done, if you'll give us your name and, and address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Chris Schaubert. I live at one five two seven Creekview Drive in Sherwood. I had a lot of points to make, but Mr. Lilly made every one of them for me. So basically, you know, you guys are talking about raising people's property taxes the worst possible time. Inflation's through the roof, everybody's just struggling to get by. And it just amazes me that everybody's sitting here saying, we should raise taxes because that's what the other town did. We should raise taxes because Maumell did it. We should raise taxes because that's what this town did. It's crazy that I hear politicians begging to raise taxes just because the other guy did it. And then to have politicians say, it's only one more dollar a week. It's only one more dollar a week, and the city will be fine. That's just not the way we should be doing things. But anyway, the property taxes, okay, my property taxes in the city of Sherwood, and I know that y'all don't get all the property taxes, have increased by a thousand dollars since two thousand and nineteen. A thousand dollars, they've gone up a thousand dollars. This includes an additional eighty-five dollars and forty-two cents for the Sherwood Road Fund. I don't even know what that is or why you guys get a road fund money. And there's an additional for the library. The library has almost doubled since I moved here. It's seventy-six dollars a year. And now you want to add another seventy-six or seventy-seven dollars a year. What's going to happen in, in when the one point three mill runs out? Are you going to let it go? Are you going to keep the one point three? Now we're at two point three. When the library fund runs out, are you going to let it expire? Or are you going to continue it? That's a question we'd like to know. I think everybody wants to know. We're already paying you guys a lot of tax. That's all I got to say, but thank you, Mr. Lilly.
That was the second reading, just go to the next one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Koff, can I, can this be separated into two ordinances so we can vote on these millages separately?
I don't think there's a prohibition to separating them. But when you take your millage to the county, the recommendation I got from bond counsel today is that it all should be on one ordinance.
So what, what happens if the council is not in favor of doing the one mill? But we're going to.
Then we'll be bringing you another ordinance that just has the library.
Or you can amend it.
I will amend it.
You would amend it?
I will amend it.
On the third reading. All right, anything else? If not, we will move on, and it'll go for another reading next month.
May I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, and I'm done. Can the, I mean, if we decide to go through with the one mill for the police and safety, can we make it not operable until after the sunset of the library mill? I have that question, why not?
I think you would have to, the timing has to be with the quorum court.
It's governed by, that's governed by state law, you can't do that in a constitution.
I don't know that, so.
If you submit it, it's going to be collected, you're right.
Is it an annual thing always, January, December? I mean, it can't.
It's always September.
We have to take it, you and I were talking about that today. We deliver that ordinance to the county every fall.
But you can, my question is, can you not deliver it in the fall to be affected July one?
No.
I don't think so, I don't think we have the authority to do that.
Let's ask that question.
They levy it on, for the year in arrears.
Because in, in listening to what's been said here tonight, if, if we all know that, we know this is one point three is going to sunset. And if it's allowed to make it happen so they're not to compound it on top of somebody, actually, persons would save money because they, they weren't being taxed one point three. Now that one's gone, there only going to be taxed one, taxed one percent. I just think it's a viable option that if we can look at it and see if it's doable, we ought to do that.
Let me look into that between you and next month.
Thank you. Does that make sense?
Next up, we have an ordinance making the designation of Sherwood City Finance Department primarily responsible for the reconciliation of the completed citation books for the Sherwood District Court and for other purposes. I was told that what this does, basically, this was a recommendation after the audit. It allows for separation, clear separation of duties. Is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else you'd want to add to that or anything? No?
No.
So, are we unclear today?
Are we? No, I mean, previously, uh, court, this was handled between police and court, but with changes within court, it was advised to bring it out of the court's office.
And you have to do it through an ordinance. You have to do it officially. You can't just-
There's a statute within Arkansas code that-
You sent us.
The judge has to name who's responsible. Yes, so.
Is, is this an emergency? I mean, is this something we can read one time tonight and I don't-
It's one of those things that the sooner the better. There's really no downside to this. It's just, it's, it's kind of an in-house, the way that-
It looks like a positive thing. It looks like we're adding, adding additional checks and balances to one of our auditable issues.
Correct.
Now, have we gotten our legislative audit?
We did.
We've not seen it. We as a council have not seen it.
No, it hasn't been finally issued yet. I think we're just waiting on-
So, my question is, you're saying this came out of the legislative audit, this recommendation that we've not seen yet?
Well, I mean, the legislative audit was here performing the audit earlier this year. However, I think it's just in the final stages with the final review, so it hasn't been issued to anyone yet. I have also not seen the final audit. I'm not sure what the timing is.
We have interviews with them, Councilmember Williams. And so, they, you know, before you get your, you know, final, it's a suggestion on, this is a better operating practice. So, it gives a better checks and balance system. It gets separation of duties. It's really not, this is not a controversial or a, you know.
The fact that you mentioned audit and I've not seen an audit, I'm thinking, wait a minute.
You will see it soon as we get it.
Yeah, I think we're just waiting on whenever-
Whatever they do, when they give it to us.
They usually send it directly to us.
It gets mailed directly to every elected official.
I just thought it might've been-
Yeah, you'll get it the same time that all of us get it. It's not a, we don't distribute it, they distribute it.
I'm looking so forward to it.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules and place it on second reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lilly and a second by Councilmember Brooks. Roll call, please.
Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
An ordinance making the designation of the Sherwood City Finance Department primarily responsible for the reconciliation of the completed citation books for the Sherwood District Court and for other purposes, second reading.
Do we suspend the rules and place it on third reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brooks and a second by Councilmember Harmon. Roll call, please.
Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
An ordinance making the designation of the Sherwood City Finance Department primarily responsible for the reconciliation of the completed citation books for the Sherwood District Court and for other purposes. That was the third reading.
Move for the adoption?
Second.
We have a motion for adoption for Councilmember Harmon and a second for Councilmember Lilly. Roll call, please.
Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
The motion passes seven yes, one no.
Next up, we have a resolution approving the acquisition of permanent easements and the purchase of certain tracts of real property in connection with the power line trail. This is for the power line trail that is the area between Brockington and Hemp Hill, where they're in the final stages of, you know, negotiations and so forth with it. As you all can read in that resolution, it does not go above, anything that goes above the spending limit of the mayor comes before the city council.
My, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I guess my question is, because easements has an S on the end. So, it's not just an easement. How many easements are there? We know.
Oh, there are easements there. I mean, so it's, it's basically between land trip, road, all the way through to Brockington Road. So, it's, I mean, just-
There could be, I mean, 35,000 dol-, I'm, I'm not saying that-
So, for example, to, to give you an idea-
What do you think is the, what, what do you think is the total amount of the, of, what's the projected amount for this total?
I've not been, right, I've not been given that. So, like, for example, your larger, larger easements and tracts.
Yeah.
Like the Lynx, let's say, or Lilac Realty, or Austin Gardens. Those are larger amounts. All those have to go before the council. But you have smaller parcels in there between Keel Avenue and moving backwards, where you've got little segmented under the power lines, kind of in the area where at one time, if you think where that recycling bins were, moving back into those areas, I believe there's like, yes, they're small. I believe there's like about six of them in that area and they're not large amounts. So.
Mayor.
Yes.
Couple of questions here. I want to make sure I understood this and maybe this is what Ms. Brooks is talking about. I read this, as for the entire easements, all of them, the max that could be spent would be 35,000. What I'm hearing you say is I have a permission to spend 35,000 on every one of these. And then I'm saying, well, Nellie, what's, which one of those scenarios is correct?
Okay, first of all, we're not planning on spending 35. Well, and some are going to be more. Like I said, the large parcels like the Lynx and, and those, which are the bulk of them, those are going to have to be, those will be considerably more and those will go before the council. The smaller tracts, I think the, the six, we're looking at six total being, you know, 35,000 or under.
Well, the, okay, the reason we were doing this along the power line trails is that those were owned by the utility companies.
No, ma'am. They have, they have right of way under there and, but they don't own the land under there. They control some of it, but they do not control all of it. You don't put the trail, and Finley, you can help speak to this, too. You don't put the trail necessarily right under the wires. So, a whole track of land, even though it could be, you know, really small, it could be off a few feet, one way or another with it, but your trail kind of, you know, meanders through. So, and I do believe that it's under the contract, it's like a 20, 80 as well.
Yep.
But we need to get moving on this because of the fact that this has been sitting for so long and that we really need to start building in the drive when we can.
Well, basically, you already have the authority to spend up to $35,000 by statute anyway.
But it's real property, yes.
But you don't have the authority to purchase real property.
Exactly.
So, what you're asking us to do is to give you the authority to use that up to $35,000 per easement to purchase these easements, but you don't know how many there are.
Well, that would, there's lots of easements, but we are looking specific, but most of them are going to be beyond my spending limit. Correct. There's only six that are small that we're, we're talking about, so.
How much do we-
Show me each other where it was.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah. How much was allocated in our budget for this project? What's our, get the budget?
Man, you got me without my computer up here. I don't remember.
If you'd, if you'd reached out, I would have the number ready, but I, I don't know offhand with it. We, we, the city-
Is it under Parks and Recs?
No, ma'am.
No.
No.
What's it under?
It's under streets. We have spent quite a bit of money on engineering and on all these different things. And every step of the way, you all have, you all have approved, but we, the bulk of it has, I mean, basically, we've gotten 20 cents on the dollar on this project throughout, whether it was, I think it was two phases of engineering, then you've got right of way acquisition and then construction. So, it's been a good deal for the city.
So, you're talking about maximum of $210,000 if you, every one of them is 35,000?
It's not going to even run that much. I, yeah, I would say for those six total properties, you're looking at 30, 35,000 maybe? Maybe. I, I think it'll go under the spending limit.
Okay. There are some folks, this is going to go through the gated area. I don't remember the name of that.
It's Austin Gardens, yes. And they have been working with them diligently for, for many months now. And so, I think that they, last I heard, I think they had met two weeks ago Saturday and they had come up with, with some agreements on it, so.
Okay.
On how to do it to make everybody happy, so.
Where is it under Streets Committee? What number is it, please, ma'am?
Um, under Street Funds, page 24.
The power line trail at 7, 71097?
Yes.
And we budgeted for that 919,000.
Yeah.
And that's, that's been on the budget now for-
56,000.
For years. In fact, I remember when we were going through the budget, Councilmember Lilly said, can we please get this done? So, we're trying to get this done, but you have to go through certain hoops.
Let us think a minute.
We've spent 56 of the 919 and it's item 71097 on our budget.
So, there's also in the non-capital dispersment line.
Yep.
There's 125,000 for the design that's budgeted.
I've got 199,000.
Yes, it, within that line.
Within that line, excuse me.
125,000 in that line.
Is for what?
For the design.
It's page 24 on your finance stuff.
It may have moved on, but in answer to the question regarding the ownership, most of the power line easement is utility easement.
That's what I thought.
The utility easement is specifically for utilities. It's not a right of way easement, so it doesn't give the city the authority to build a trail on top of it generally.
It also doesn't mean that the utility owns it. It means it's an easement.
I know what that means.
Well, but-
And for that reason, generally, if you ask an appraiser, how much, like what the value of a right of way easement is or a trail easement, it's a lot more expensive to buy a trail easement than it is a utility easement because a utility easement is underground or overhead. The owner of the property can still pretty much utilize the property for a lot of things, but if it's, if it's a trail easement or a right of way easement, it's, it's pavement, so they can't really do anything with it. It's not dissimilar in cost to just real property to buy a right of ways or a trail easement.
And this is not like, I mean, basically, you know, because this is a grant, it goes, you have to follow certain rules as we've seen on other projects. And so, it's not like I can go out and negotiate right away. It has to be done through appraisals, which it has been done. It's, it's a set amount. It's not what I think it should be. It's what the professionals say it is.
So, that, that project was going to cost a million dollars to do the-
Yes, ma'am.
More than that, actually, that's, that's the budgeted amount. A lot of it is grant funded, but it'll end up being, I don't remember what the cost estimate's at now, but yes, it'll, the, the total construction cost will be well over a million. I don't know if Brian has the construction cost estimate.
That, that was at 80, 20? Is, is one, surely not. Surely, 1 million's not 20%.
Well, with, after considering all of the designs, right of way and construction costs.
It's everything in there.
Yes, we'll be, we'll be, it'll be multiple millions of dollars for sure.
Offend anybody, but it's approaching 9 o'clock and I think we've wandered from the topic at hand, which is the amount here, 35,000. Do we want to just add, amend this and add a limit, a total limit cost to this to make it so? The mayor's authorized to execute all necessary documentation in connection with the acquisitions not to exceed a total aggregate limit of 35,000.
No, because she just said it was going to be more than that.
What'd you say?
Well, what, what I'm saying is the smaller parcels, so-
What do you, what do you want the limit to be?
Well, if the, if there, the larger parcels will be going before the council because that is beyond-
I understand that.
So, basically, what it needs to be, so for those six, I cannot spend more than a total without coming to the council.
I understand that, but they're not all going to, you said they're not all going to be $35,000. There'll be a nickel or less than that.
I'm saying, right, the total of-
For the six?
Yes.
You think, you can get the six for under 35.
Yes, ma'am.
So, then if you just put total of 35. Put total of 35.
I did, but she said that one enough.
Well, what I'm saying is when you, not of the entire project, because those larger ones are coming before you all.
Okay.
I'm not counting those. Those aren't in here. Those aren't in here.
We're only talking about-
We're only talking about these small ones. Okay, the mayor's authorized to execute all the necessary documentation in connection with, um, how do, how do we talk about just those six acquisitions, those six?
Say six. Say six properties.
Six properties with the six, with six acquisitions not to exceed a total aggregate limit of 35,000.
Okay. And that, then all the others have to come here anyway.
Correct, and they would, yes.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. I'm not sure how to say all that, but a resolution approving the acquisition of permanent easements and the purchase of certain real tracts for real property in connection with the power line trails as amended by Councilmember Harmon.
Move for the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Second.
We have to have an, we have to first have a vote on the amendment.
A vote on the amendment.
Charlie, could you please repeat your amendment, honey? Section 2.
The mayor is authorized to execute all necessary documents, documentation in connection with the six acquisitions not to exceed, not to exceed a total aggregate spending limit of 35,000.
So, we need a motion for that amendment.
Which we have.
Which we have.
We've got a motion I've got to say.
And we've got a second. So, roll call, please.
Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Wade.
Aye.
All right. A resolution approving the acquisition of permanent easements and the purchase of certain real tracts, or certain tracts of real property in connection with the power line trails as amended by Councilmember Harmon.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harmon, and a second by Councilmember Lilly. Roll call, please. Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Yes, we are now open for old business, and Councilmember Broderick, you had something to say.
Yes, I know y'all are ready to go, but there's some folks who have waited very patiently to speak, and they knew it was gonna be a long meeting. These are the folks on Pinewood. This is what I'm asking the council to, to look at. We had a blooper. Ms. Hines came and spoke several months ago, and she may speak again, but basically on Pinewood, and I believe it was Councilmember Harmon who made the distinction that for speed cushions, it has to be the resident, not the homeowner. So somebody living in Florida can't sign a petition if they're not living in that home, that's what our ordinance says. So, the petition went through, we did not catch it, they do not have enough signatures, so it really, the, the speed cushion should have never been installed, because they didn't qualify based on the criteria that we passed in our ordinance. So, Ms. Hines has been very diligent to bring that back to my attention, and I've showed it to Mr. Cobb, he confirmed that that is correct. He got the information from the street department. So, I don't know if Ms. Hines would still like to speak, but basically what I'm asking the council is, at this point, they are still very, very, very unhappy. They do not, the people right where the speed cushions are, they should have never been installed, because it didn't meet our own criteria that we set. So I'm asking the council, can we have those removed at this point? That's my ask.
So, that, just to make sure everybody understands the sequence of events, and Brian, if you would like to kind of come forward with that. So, when it was brought to our attention that the owner of the property, who is local, signed it, we then reached out to the resident, who is the owner's daughter, to find out whether or not she indeed approved of the speed cushion. She then called up and said she indeed supported and wanted the speed cushion. So I believe this was already discussed once at city council, given the series of events. You know, if, if you all feel differently in terms of, you know, the policy, what have you, then, you know, that is fine, we're here to administer, you know, the, the wishes of the council and the legislation. But that's, that's basically, you know-
Part of the problem, I think, is that the neighbor is, is maybe saying that she didn't sign the actual resident, so the problem is, by the letter of the law that we passed, it didn't qualify, and, and you're not able to go back and add signatures or change after the petition closed, and they're very unhappy.
Well, my concern would be that we pull it up, and then they pass a new, new petition, and this time they get the resident's signature, and then we put it right back down again. And that's a lot of expense and manpower that's unnecessary.
But it should have never gone in, and, and so we're, we're telling these residents, hey, we passed an ordinance, we didn't follow our own ordinance, I know that you're unhappy, I'm sorry. You see, it does not feel right to do that to these folks.
From our standpoint at Public Works, once, once a petition's given to us, the only, only way we have to verify who signed it is the legal owner of the property by Pulaski County Records, other than going door-to-door and trying to verify it that way. And so that, that is how we verified it, the actual legal property owner, which was the lady that resides in the home's mother, signed it for her in her absence. But she said she would have signed it if she'd have been present.
Yeah, and she was at the house at the time.
Ms. Hines, would you like to speak? I know you signed up.
But this is one of the reasons why we have asked to review the policy, because I think it's appropriate to, you know, it was something new, so, we can take it, you know, take a look at it and see if there's changes, and how we want to, and, and also, are, is there a mechanism to remove it, remove it? Because right now, there's not, so these are all reasons why we brought it up to the Street Committee to-
I've got a timeline for you. The petition was supposed to be turned into the mayor's office or to the city by November third. Whenever, the first that we knew, those of us in our neighborhood, that there were enough signatures supposedly on the petition, was when they arrived and started putting in the speed cushions on November fifteenth and sixteenth. We requested, I'm sorry, we requested that we be given FOI, a lot of information, and one of them was the signed petition. At that point in time, we knew that Lisa West did not live next door to me. She had moved several years ago, and her daughter was living there. Lisa West is not the resident, and in the city council meeting, when, I think it was August, it states that you have to be the resident to sign that petition. So that signature was not valid. Whenever those cushions were put in front of our houses, it was not valid. So we came to the December meeting and talked about the problem we were having. And by the way, those cushions have been down two-hundred-and-eighty-four days. I know, I hear them. But we came to the council meeting and talked about the validity of that one signature. At that point, the mayor said, we need to check this out and check on the validity of the signature. That was not a valid signature. So then, the city goes back and calls Lacy West, the daughter, and from what I have heard, I cannot find any records on it, there is no signature, there is no letter, and this is in, it was February, February, uh, Street Commission meeting that it was brought up. This is months after the petition had closed. So are y'all gonna let people go back, you've got, someone signs all the petition signatures, you've got three that are invalid, and you're gonna go back and say, oh, well, let's get here, and here, and here, and it's two months later, and you've already installed the speed cushions? That doesn't feel right. So, I would like to be rid of the speed cushions. But the other thing is, the city's got a problem with that ordinance, you've got way too many holes in it. So, I want something done. The signatures were not valid, they are not legal, take the speed cushion up. And there are five families that are affected by this every day. Deanna Dream, who lives next door to me, is here. Jim Heifel had been here, he and his son were both coming, and softball got in the way. So, and I don't know why the Browns are not here, but we are all affected by this. But I don't think the city can just willy-nilly say, okay, that signature wasn't valid, let's just talk to this one on the phone, and let's go back and fix it. No. I'll answer any questions, I've got timelines, I've got dates. And there is also a noise study that has been done. We are seeing that, now this is not every day, but decibels as high as a hundred and twenty. That is almost instant damage to your ears. And I've had trouble reading the noise, I forget about the microphone, I've, I've had trouble reading the noise. I know what the, the, I guess, the median is, but we are hearing, in my house, ninety decibels at times. And that is like an ambulance turning on the siren in front of you. It's not for very long, but it wakes you up, can't go back to sleep real quick, and then when you do get back to sleep, it's not very long before something else goes through. And we've got us a little collection of the stuff that's been jarred out of trailers. So far, a fork has been the most interesting, that we can't figure out why a fork can't hit up, you know. But if you would like, Ms. Dream's got, she works from home, and so she's got a situation where she's hearing it all the time, and one of the Heifels, well, two of the Heifels work from home, and they're complaining about the noise. And, and if you've got, they tell me that we are the only ones complaining. If we're the only ones complaining, then there's gotta be something wrong here. I'd find out what the problem was, so.
So this, this is my ask to the council, can we have those removed, since they should have never been put down in the first place? So what Ms. Hines said to me on a phone call a few weeks ago was that she feels like she's not being heard, and I, I can relate to that, and I understand that. So she, she sat through, what, we were at three hours and seven minutes, this is her second or third council meeting, I mean, she's doing all the things, and she, and we have data, and it shouldn't have been put down, so why are we just gonna say, well, so my ask is, can they be removed?
Well, I think they've got two options. You either remove them, and then you may have, you have the people who wanted it there, because there was obviously some people who wanted it there, because we'd had a petition that's only one signature shy of having over sixty percent. You have those people go back and redo the petition and get it corrected to get it put back down, or we ask those people if they want to pass a new petition, and see if they can get it correct the second time before we pull it up. And give them an opportunity to start anew with a brand-new petition, and see if they, see if they get it right this time, before we pull the thing up, and give them thirty days to do that. Give them thirty days to get a petition correct, and correct their petitions from scratch before we pull it up.
I guess, what's the pleasure of the council? The hard thing is, like she said, that's not, if we didn't meet the, the petition signatures on something else, we wouldn't get more time or get to, you know, it seems very unfortunate for these folks.
We didn't build in a oops into our, into our ordinance, or maybe we should have, but we've got an oops here. And we've got to find some way, we've got to find the best, most equitable way to fix it.
Right, I have a question. I'm gonna be very Pollyanna-y, assuming that everything's gonna work out great. It's not like you just go and just skip those cushions up and then put them in the warehouse, and if they something, if one isn't getting put back, are they destroyed when you skip them up?
No, you, you sacrifice the anchors that, that hold them down, and, and the street will be somewhat ugly, because you epoxy the anchors in where it's, you know, where it's located right now. So, I think, I think it's about five hundred dollars to replace the anchors, to be able to reinstall them somewhere else.
And I think Councilmember Harmon is saying that, because, well, we don't want it to have happened, because we know that there is a speeding problem. I mean, this was talked about, why, the coffee kiosk and so forth, so, I mean, for years, we've heard there's a speeding problem on Pinewood, help, you know, et cetera. If we take one up, and this is part of the reason why I asked for a review, then there's got to be a moratorium on not putting one down for years, because this is an, this is time, and this is an expense, in terms of, you know, for the city. I don't want us putting them down, taking them up, putting them down, taking them up, I mean, that just becomes futile. If, if we, if we take them up, they've got to stay off, you know?
But it shouldn't have ever gone down, that's the, that's the hard thing.
Let me, Ms. Hines, are you open, and, and this is, you can say no to this question, are you open to if we decided, I mean, they're gonna be working, reworking this ordinance? I mean, this, how, how to do this, to maybe work out the oops part of it? Are you open to giving it?
I can't make a decision for five different families.
But you seem to be the spokesperson.
My thing right now is, why am I having to pay for sleepless night, with sleepless nights, for something that is not my fault?
I hear you, thank you, ma'am.
But I cannot make a decision for the, all five families.
If I understand what you said, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, the only verification, irregardless of this situation, of the signatures, is done by you or your, your department, and the only way you have to do it is by pages or whatever county tax records.
By county records.
But yet our policy says it's the resident, so in theory, that's not being verified.
No, in, in theory, the only way we could do that would be somebody come in after hours, and, and it would take multiple evenings to maybe catch people at home. I think it, I think it took the mayor's office a while to get in touch with the, I can't think of the names right now.
Brian, they went out several times, but the person was at work, you know, during office hours, so then we, as a last resort, sent a letter saying, you know, we, here's the situation, we need to know what, how you feel about this, please contact the mayor's office.
Well-
It's written this way, but yet we're not able-
Very, very hard to verify that, and then, say we were to go verify it, and when we went and verified it, we realized somebody else lived there, would it have been all right for her to sign it then, when staff went by? I, I don't think there's a time requirement that I know of in the policy that says they've only got a certain amount of time to sign it.
But the petition closed, so, so common sense would be-
Well, it's closed once they turn it in to us, but, but if there was some sort of mistake, I don't know what the rules and regulations are, can it be corrected?
Right.
And, and apparently it was a mistake.
And, and part of it is, they were at the house, I mean, it wasn't-
This was a policy that, that was passed by ordinance, and, and, you know, perhaps it should say property owner instead of resident, I mean, you know, that, they're the ones that have the, you know, the, the property value. I don't know, I don't know what the answer to that is, but the, the current policy says resident, and, and that's what we ought to be following. That, that's my, my, my view and my opinion, and I think, at this point, go pull the damn thing up, and if, if they circulate another petition, and it gets signed and approved by, by everybody that, that needs to, and they meet the percentages, then put it back down. I mean, Pinewood was, was the most argued or, um, street brought to the Street Committee and to this council for speeding for years.
Years and years and years, definitely.
And, and, you know, and it proved that the speed cushion cut the speeding down dramatically. But, but at this point, if the policy wasn't followed, pull it up, and let's move on. I mean, this isn't worth arguing about.
I, I would agree, and I know back when we used to put up those little blue signs, like, slow down, your children live here or something, I was always putting those up on Pinewood, because that formerly was our ward, and I was always being requested, bring the sign, so, I agree.
If Kevin says, pull them up, I say, pull them up. Make a motion that we pull them up on Pinewood.
So, so we're making a motion to follow the policy. I, I, I don't, I personally don't think that's required, let's follow the policy.
Make a motion that we pull them up.
All right, let's do it.
Do we have a second?
Take it.
Roll call. Sanders.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
I got two real fast things in our old business, real fast.
Thank you.
I know, real fast. Oh, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and Mr. Lilly, I have done an awful lot of research on this, if you want help on an ordinance, let me know, because there's gotta be-
I would love any input I can get, thank you very much.
All right. As I announced last month, Keep Sherwood Beautiful is trying to revamp, and we need any and all help, we meet at three PM tomorrow, Bill Harmon Rec Center. Number two, any update on Rock Region Metro, because last I heard, they were supposed to be here August fifteenth.
Yes, the last, we have been told that they are supposed to be up and running by the end of September. So that they did a job fair, and they did get enough drivers, and, yes. So as soon as I receive the, the go-live date, I think they're planning on doing a teaching session about how the app works, because that's how you, you book it, and make sure that the public knows how to do that, and then it goes live. But as soon as, I know, I'll let you guys know, so. All right, anything that we need to take up on our new business? Mr. Townsall has an announcement.
I don't get that very often, thank you, ma'am. I was gonna say, as chairman of the Act for Sherwood effort, that the citizens of Sherwood, the northern part of Sherwood, who are registered voters in that northern part, three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six of them were certified as legitimate signatures, as registered voters. We turned in far more than that, but we do know that this petition drive was certified. There will be an issue on the ballot for November fifth to change the laws in northern Sherwood, to make them the same as southern Sherwood, so that we can hopefully level the playing field for development up there, that they can sell the very same items in northern Sherwood that they can in southern Sherwood. That will be on the ballot. The ten-day, we got those certified October, uh, excuse me, August fourteenth. The ten-day waiting period expired in Saturday, on Saturday. Just for the benefit of the doubt, they let it run through Monday, as of end of business day today, the Pulaski County clerk did not get a objection to that certification. So unless there is a lawsuit, at this point, it's gonna be on the ballot, and we'll have a chance to level the playing field for economic development across the northern half of, northern, really close to two-thirds of our city. And that's good news for Sherwood. There are a lot of volunteers, over fifty people circulated petitions for the effort. There was a lot of different, there was events, there were, there were other kinds of drives, there were a lot of people that went door-to-door for months, and we have to, a big, big debt of gratitude to those people that did that.
Please ask your team to stand, so we can thank them.
We have only a few of them here, there's, there's plenty of people that did it.
Everyone who gathered a signature, did a website, did a whatever, please stand, as you can see around this room.
I see a number of people that worked on doing that. But these are representatives of what really has cast a thousands, because if you didn't sign your name, this wouldn't have happened. So the, the real thanks goes to the citizens of Sherwood. Thank y'all for it.
Also, under announcements, September second is the Labor Day holiday, so city offices will be closed, and those who were supposed to have had their garbage picked up on Monday, it will be picked up on Tuesday. September second, the Thornhill Pool closes for the season, it's been a great swim season, we've had some really good numbers, utilized- We've had some really good numbers, utilize our pool facilities, so that's been a great thing. Also, today, the Harmon Center, Jim Floor, was up and operational, and it looks fabulous. If you've not seen it, it, it really, they did a great job. September 12th is the Chamber Fish Fry at 5:00 PM at Sherwood Forest.
Until 7:00, and you can contact any chamber member for fish fry tickets.
They do a great job. It is a fun event. It's a great fundraiser, great, great fish. Please come if you possibly can. And then also, September 19th is the Third Thursday in the Park Free Concert at City Hall Park. It'll be from 7:00 to 9:00. It's tragically white. If you've not attended one of these events, they are so much fun. So please come. There'll be food trucks there, and enjoy some great music.
Mayor, quick question, and maybe from Mr. Towns.
Yes, sir.
I know there's a prohibition, I guess it's like a word for elected officials to be involved in the petitioning part of Act Four. Was that the only restriction now that it's?
On the ballot.
Garnered on the ballot, we can openly?
I don't know.
I think you can have an opinion about it.
Okay.
What's the matter?
And in fact, the council can even pass a resolution in support of it, according to the opinion we got from the Ethics Commission on that. Okay?
Thank you.
And that could be forthcoming next month. The city council may allow public comment at this time if they so wish. We have.
One individual.
One individual who has signed up. Is that the wish of the council?
No objection.
Okay.
Would you state your name, sir, and you have three minutes?
Yeah, name and address for the record, please.
I'll give you, my name is Mike. You don't have to have the rest. That's against my constitutional rights. You always ask people, and there you go, smirking. But I'm going to be talking about you, mayor, and Brian Galloway, and city council, if you haven't seen it already. I was basically going to not divulge this information to y'all, but I was advised through the Attorney General's office today to give you the information. The mayor, the sidewalks, sidewalks on Keel Avenue, there's twelve different purchase orders as of today. Work is still being done. The total is over a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand that has been paid, and no bid. Procurement laws exist. You cannot divide a project into pieces. And the Attorney General's office is investigating, and Arkansas Legislative Audit is, and Joe Archer, if y'all want to call him, feel free to call him. The news media is aware of this, and I still haven't received, and I was told that there was no bids totaling over a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I've called several different companies up, concrete companies up, and you've been overcharged, the taxpayers have been overcharged, the residents. And you guys worry about thirty, thirty-five thousand, when this, when this project would have cost twenty-five percent less, and I got outside concrete companies that vouch for me. Second of all, I'm still waiting, you guys talking about money, and the police chief is talking about money, and there's, and City Hall, almost a quarter of a million dollars spent on a pickleball court. That's outrageous. Did any of you all have, vote on that? Where'd that money come from? There's more money that can be spent better than that when there's other pickleball courts around. That's, my word is disgusting. You guys spend thirty minutes talking about something that's thirty-five thousand dollars total when that. And I'm doing this out of courtesy of the Attorney General. They thought it'd be a good idea, and it's up to you all, if, unless you guys want to work on it before the Attorney General does. But it's not going to go away, and a lot of people know about this. It's going to go on social media, and the news crew, they've already told me that they want to interview me. And that's it. I don't have no other, I did a FOIA request on the pickleball court to see if there's any bids.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
On the pickleball courts. And we'll see if that comes back. If that doesn't come back with other bids, besides a Kansas City company doing a light work over there for forty-five hundred dollars, that's a red flag. And a person doing the work out of Conway, JB, no, MB Concrete, friends with this guy, Brian Galloway, who I just talked to today, you know?
Okay, your time has expired, sir.
Thank you.
Move your turn.
Second.